Good evening and welcome to this, the October 28th meeting of the Livermore City Council, the Halloween edition. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll calls show that all members of the city council are present and accounted for. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Thank you. There was no reportable action taken in the closed session tonight. And with that, we have, under proclamations and presentations, we have the beautification committee update. We have Chair Barbara Hickman is here tonight to present that update. And then we have some beautification awards as well. Ms. Hickman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. And I'm Barbara Hickman, as the mayor said, Chair of the Beautification Committee. And I want to thank you for inviting us to give our annual report this evening. And I want to thank the rest of the committee, who, I didn't do it all by myself, the rest of the committee, those who are present here this evening and those unable to make it. Cynthia Dake is Vice Chair, Paul Eldridge, Mark Ralca, Susan Lewis, and Kathy Norfleet. Now, Mark is our newest member and he has been a great asset. You guys did a good job when you picked him. Cynthia is a returning member. We do have a vacancy, so if anyone listening would like to join our committee, let the council know. We also want to thank our city staff liaisons, Jeff Schaefer and Roberta Matthews. They are fantastic. And City Arbor is Joe Prime and Tim Mesa have been very generous with their help and advice. We have good support for our committee. Now, the major accomplishments of the committee for last year include, we reviewed designs by the Las Pascidas Community College Art and Design Group for possible graffiti abatement projects within the city. They're a very talented group of people. I was going to say kids, but they're not kids. They're adults, young adults, most of them. Our projects offer them an outlet for their talent and their skills beautify our city. They did a very nice mural under the Stanley Boulevard overpass. And if you haven't seen it, it really is worth the effort to go look at it. We also did our annual park reviews. Committee members reviewed 18 city-maintained parks for any needed repairs and reported back to staff. And our parks really are in pretty good shape. And we, along with staff, supported Arbor Day presentations, giving to 1,200 second graders throughout Livermore. They were given a bag of helpful pamphlets about trees and ecology in general, and a package of flower seeds to plant. Now, new thing this year, in December, we, well, staff liaison, Roberta Matthews, actually, sent letters to about 30 residents thanking them for beautifying our city with their holiday decorations, outstanding holiday decorations. We picked just a few that stood out in our minds, that we happened to see on our way to the grocery store or wherever. There were a lot. Finally, one of our favorites, the annual beautification awards, which we are requesting that you present this evening. We have four nominees from different areas of the city. So if we could have the lights out. If I can get this straight here. The first one is Mark and Elizabeth Ben-Gorrell. And theirs was really, really very nice. They have drought-tolerant landscape and native plants, reduced irrigation, and low maintenance. And this is a corner house. The first picture is from P Street and the second picture is from College Avenue, I think. Anyway, it's on the corner and both, from either direction, it looks fantastic. I passed it again today and I just loved it. And next, we have, oh, this is another one of theirs. Oh, the one with the fire plug is from College Avenue. It just, it looks good from both directions. The next one is Robert and Shirley Ye, and this is on St. Charles Court. They, we didn't get it at the best time of year. Spring is the best time of year, but it's still very colorful, even, and I think this picture was taken in September. They use mulch to retain the moisture and hardscape was used on the side of the driveway, as you can see, to keep the water consumption down. And next, we have Gail and Joel Olney. They are on South S Street. It's a very well-kept, older home, nice landscaping along the driveway. It's very neat and clean-looking, and a well-maintained, mature oak tree in front. There are two, I like the flag that's in front of it. That's important, too. And the last one is Deborah Atchison on Tahoe Drive. She chose reduced-maintenance-type landscaping, added trees and drought-tolerant ornamental grasses and flowers, a dry bed creek appearance, and retains irrigation on the property. So congratulations to all our beautification award winners. Now, if we could have the, we can turn the lights on again. I would like to call up this year's recipients of the award, and if the mayor would present the award. First, we have Mark and Elizabeth Ben-Gorrell. Theirs was the pretty one on College Avenue, corner of College and Oak Street. and next, we have Robert and Shirley Ye, and theirs is on St. Charles Court. And Gail and Joel Olney on South S Street. And the fourth one was not able to come tonight.
I do have a card for 2.01, John Hagan. Mr. Hagan?
Yeah, hi, good evening. I have a very simple request that appeared tonight because I don't know how else to do it. And it's kind of in line with the beautification committee with, I think is a terrific thing. And it has to do with trash in the city. I spent many weekend mornings picking up trash along Kinkanen, Tesla, Vallesito's in particular, because as you come off 84 and enter the wine country, I want it, tonight, be nice and clean, and people not see trash on our streets. So Vallesito's, Wetmore. And does anybody here take the H train to work? Show of hands. So, in particular, the railroad tracks. And so, if you do take the H train to work, I take it down to Silicon Valley on a regular basis. Fremont is disgusting-looking. And I don't want Livermore to get like Fremont. And I have a request. I know it's Union Pacific land, but Union Pacific's not going to clean it up, and it's the people of Livermore that put the trash there. You know, two trucks, one day, start at railroad station, go in each direction, you can get it done. I'll volunteer to help. I'd like the railroad tracks cleaned up, because if you don't clean it up, people get the idea that it's okay to dump trash. And so, I'm simply here before the council to see if something can be done about the trash in our city. You don't see big piles, but if you walk a mile along the streets, you'll be surprised how many large bags of trash you can fill up. And that's it. So I would like to know how to follow up on this and what action.
Okay, well, so, well, I guess we can sort of talk about it, because it's 2.01, so it is on the agenda. So typically, something like this would come up during the citizens forum. And the city council cannot deliberate nor take action on items brought up during the citizens forum. But because this is 2.01, and it's for beautification, we could just, I'll just kick this back to staff. And I'm, you know, when it comes to picking up trash, you know, that's kind of one of the things I do, you know, that and graffiti. But it is a difficult sort of thing with UP, because, for example, there's that storage building on Railroad and South L, or L, I guess. And it takes us almost a year to get permission from UP to get that building painted, to abate the graffiti. So, I was going to kick it back to staff. Yeah, it'd be great if we could just walk down and pick up the trash, but UP will not let us onto the right-of-way. I was just saying, we're just going to discuss it here, so.
Yeah, no, but there's one really bad area along the tracks, which is on Stanley and near the high school, but a little bit further down, El Camido, I think. That, there's, there was like illegal camping there, and they left a tremendous amount of trash. And if we could just clean up that one area, it's easy to access, that would be, you know, terrific.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hagan.
Thank you.
So just, pick it back to staff.
Honorable Mayor, if you could have Mr. Lanfear get the contact information from the speaker, we can follow up with him directly on that.
Okay, Mr. Hagan, I just got an offer. If you could give your contact information to Scott Lanfear, we can get back in touch with you. Okay, great. Thank you very much, and thank you for your concern about the community. But again, UP has been somewhat difficult to work with in the past, so we'll try to get some more contact there. Okay, now, moving on to citizens forum, these are items that, oh, I'm sorry, advisory body appointments. So this is the confirmation of advisory body appointments and reappointments and the administration of oath of office to the new members. And we have Mark Ross for the Human Services Commission. Mr. Ross, are you here? Great, thank you so much for volunteering your time. Greatly appreciate that. And now to administer the oath of office, Ms. Weber.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear?
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance?
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations?
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Well and faithfully?
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which?
Upon which?
I am a vouchant.
I am a vouchant. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for volunteering your time.
Honorable Mayor, it is traditional that you take a motion to reappoint the members as well.
All right. What I was going to use, I was going to read off the Airport Commission. We are appointing Adam Birch, and also reappointing Darren Bishop. And for the Human Services Commission, we will be reappointing Evan Branning, Eric Hom, Nicole Sardella, and Marty Sutton. You're re-upping, huh? Good, thank you. So with that, I will take a motion for all of those appointments and reappointments.
I'll move that we accept the appointments and reappointments.
Moved by Vice Mayor Carling, seconded by, we have second, Councilor Coomer then, second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A pass unanimously. Thank you all for donating your time to the community. It makes it a better place. Okay, now on to the citizens forum. As I mentioned before, these are items that are typically, they are not on the agenda, and the city council can neither deliberate nor take action. So with that, Greg Scott, Dennis Cardellini, and Donna Griffith. Mr. Scott.
Greg Scott, the state of California is in an emergency declaration, one of many, but the one that is declared by the governor. I'd like to thank all the firefighters out there, and the law enforcement and the first responders, those that are involved with setting up the evacuation centers and all to help the people in the horrible fires, especially the Kincaid Fire in Sonoma, and the Tick Fire out of Santa Clarita, and all the other fires. I was born in this state. I was born and raised in Southern California. I grew up with fires as a kid. I saw 100,000-acre fires. It was complete with everything, except for Nero and his violin and Rome burning. But the fires of that era, there just wasn't the population density, there was more open land to burn. We in Southern California had the Santa Ana winds off the desert. They were pretty regular, the third week of September in those days, and October, but they weren't like the fires of today. I never remember 300-foot fire tornadoes. It's a different era. To all those people that have lost their homes and join the homeless, I hope the response to them being homeless is a lot more than the people that are already homeless. It's just more timely. On homelessness, there's a woman out there that's homeless, living in her car in Livermore. I hope that she can get into the safe parking program. She applied for housing through Abode Services seven years ago, seven years. She sleeps in her car here in Livermore, and she sleeps in fear. She learned from a Pleasanton police officer defense mechanism to have a wasp spray, a can of wasp spray, but it's a caveat that she has to document, that she tells the person that they have to get medical attention. If she does use that for defense, because it's a neurotoxin, it can cause temporary blindness. This woman has two cans of wasp spray, one at each hand as she sleeps. That's part of the one situation in Livermore. So it's in my vein of speak to me of the Crisis Intervention Services, and I will speak to you of the crises. $494,000 for Crisis Intervention Services to be spent by March 31st, 2021, and I see a lot of crises out there. Another woman I know out there, I was sitting out there, there was no walls in the vicinity, and she just screamed. She had another epileptic or psychogenic seizure. She's been out there for five years, homeless, living in a car. I hope more for response for people that go homeless, both from the tragedies from the fires and those that are already homeless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Dennis Cardellini, Donna Griffith, Lori Nezovich.
I'm Dennis Cardellini. I'm here with two of my neighborhood friends, Lori and Donna, and we're here seeking the council's help. New technology has been introduced into our society. Without consideration of its impact on our communities, the technology makes it possible for a homeowner to sell short-term rentals of their homes over the internet. It's currently offered through systems like VRBO and Airbnb. This technology, by its very nature, has caused friction, frustration, and anxiety in our neighborhood. This is largely because the homeowner deals directly with the renter, and the neighbors who are impacted by the rental have no say in the process. If you had visited our neighborhood a year ago, you would have found an ideal situation. We were neighborly in the best ways. We greeted each other warmly, we helped each other with projects, we admired each other's achievements, and we shared pride in our neighborhood. All of this changed when one of the homes changed ownership. More precisely, it changed from parents to son. He is young, has a growing family, and sees short-term rentals as a significant way to supplement his family income. In the complete absence of any citywide regulations, he turned his home into a short-term rental unit. His standard routine is to move his family to a hotel somewhere in the Bay Area and return after the renters have departed, usually Sunday evening or Monday. The renters are left unsupervised, leaving it to us neighbors to deal with or tolerate noisy parties, drunkenness, drug use, and in one case, the filming of a music video. We have met with our neighbors and suggested measures that could be taken to make the situation more tolerable, and we were told there is no law against his business, and he would proceed as he sees fit. So if you come to visit our neighborhood today, you will find two camps, divided by frustration, distrust, and disagreement over these rentals. The absence of citywide rules leaves every aspect up for dispute. It's my belief that short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods are damaging the relationships among neighbors, and left unchecked will permeate our city and denigrate the quality of life in Livermore. In addition, while we have no intention to sell our home, I have no doubt that if I were to put it up for sale, the value of our home would be negatively impacted by the fact that the house next door is rented to strangers every weekend. I therefore urge you to adopt a set of regulations to control or eliminate this threat to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardellini. Donna Griffith, Lori Nezovich, Nancy Bankhead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Donna Griffith. My family has resided on Valley View Court for almost 20 years. I can't believe that we live in an age where neighbors rent out their entire home for extended periods to people on vacation. We've loved living and continuing to raise our family on a beautiful, quiet, and safe street, until our neighbors decided to turn their home into a vacation rental property. We never imagined, nor do we want to live next door to a hotel with strangers in vacation mode, constantly coming and going. There are Uber and Lyft cars in front of our court, an increase in parked cars, and people sitting out in their cars during the night. Even a rap artist filmed a risque video at this house, proof that you never know who you are going to have show up next door. Our quality of life in our neighborhood we once loved is now being compromised by our careless neighbors. What started out as a weekend rental here and there has now become extended long weekends, and this has been going on now for over a year. Even more surprising to me is when we asked these neighbors how they would feel if we rented out our home every weekend right next door to them, they admitted that they wouldn't like it. I am pleading with our city, that we love, to do something about short-term rentals before this becomes an even more serious problem in all of our Livermore neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Lori Nezovich, Nancy Bankhead.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Lori Kenezovich. I live at 3602 Valley View Court. I have lived there for 26 years. I would like to speak to the issue of our lack of an ordinance governing short-term rentals. As you have heard from my neighbors, it takes a toll on us emotionally. However, I would like to present to you some factual information regarding short-term rentals in the Tri-Valley. We are not the only city that's been affected by short-term rental issues, and yet we are the last of the Tri-Valley to enact an ordinance that says no to short-term rentals. The cities of Pleasanton, Dublin, San Ramon, Danville, and Brentwood do not allow short-term rentals for less than 30 days within any residential-zoned area, except for licensed bed and breakfast with a conditional use permit and with the host on site. Comparing Livermore as a tourist destination based on our wine country, even the Napa Valley prohibits short-term rentals. You may ask, how many short-term rentals does Livermore have currently? Well, there's no way to know, because they are unregulated, and anyone can sign up to do it with Airbnb, Verbo, or HomeAway apps. We propose an ordinance for the city of Livermore that prohibits short-term rentals of 30 days or less, just as our neighboring cities have done. Let's end short-term rentals and welcome wine enthusiasts and other tourists to our beautiful city through our new hotels downtown and at the outlets, and with our many existing hotels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nancy Bankhead and Carl Wintey.
Hello, I'm Nancy Bankhead. I had something fun happen this weekend that I didn't know anything about, and I'm wondering if you guys know. I got a call from the Chamber of Commerce that somebody wanted to film a film out at my place the next day. And I go, okay. And it was Future Explorers Trained Adults with Developmental Disabilities to Filmmakers and Help Them Employed in the Industry. We also have a production company called Future Films and are available for hire at all film needs. We have a studio in Livermore, in Stockton, and Stockton, Sacramento. The gal was, it was her two-year-old birthday today, so she couldn't come. Anyway, the film that they filmed was this year's, we filmed our semester thesis film called Earthy, about alien students who crashed on Earth while filming their class project and had to find their way home while having adventures and learning about the locals. It premieres in March of 2020. It would be really cool if you guys could show it or do something for them. So this year, My Pony has credit in two movies. I'm very proud of my star. So Livermore is an amazing place and doing something new every day, but this was the students, the disability students, wrote the play. And it was very well-done. It was very cool.
That's Joey Travolta and Inclusion Films. And yes, he is related to that Travolta, but he really does amazing work, and that really is a
But it's different, it's somebody else.
Yes, Joey Travolta, the Inclusion Films, it's his company. And, so he, it's his brother. And so they, he does some amazing work, and the studio's right here in Livermore. And, but they've had shows, and they've had film festivals at the bank, I'm sorry, at Divine Cinema, at Divine, and it's pretty remarkable, the work that these young people do. And some of that work goes on to becoming employed in the film industry full-time. So, thank you for bringing that up. But that's, when it's scheduled for the, for the Vine, let us know. Thanks. Carl Wintey.
Mr. Mayor, Council, as always, I salute you and thank you for what you do, serving this democratic republic. Those who put on a bulletproof vest to go to work and protect us, those who've got a badge on, bulletproof vest, protect us, we thank you. To those that are fighting fires, right, running up my house behind mine's road to get there, like, I salute y'all for keeping it safe, working hard. We do have challenges in this state. I'm not sure if other people have picked up on this, just kidding, but we want to all come together and do the best that we can across all of it. So, good government, it is a process, and that process functions. And so, just the continual learning, you have the residents of the city of Livermore, this is an org chart, I am not one, I live just outside of town, the mayor, city council, city manager, city attorney, risk management has its own box, some box have people, some box have, you know, titles, I get it. Administrative service, community development, the fire department, the innovation and economic development, library services, police department, and public works, it all functions because It all functions because there is the chart here, and again, I salute you all for being part of what is good government overall, and just the continued to learn on it. And then I love getting here, I make sure I get in here before you say we're going to pledge allegiance to the flag. That said, I question why we don't pledge allegiance to the constitutions, because fundamentally, that's what it is, right? But the flag is the representation of the constitution itself, of the federal constitution. But I say we should pledge allegiance to the constitutions, plural, with the U.S. Constitution amended, amended to reverse an amendment that happened previously, all that, living document, to the state constitution of California, which provides us such great, yet not great, language about initiatives and referendums, to the county documents, East Alameda County Plan, the South Valley Area Plan, the City General Plan, the specific plans that overlay, the districts, the precincts, and the like, to the constitutions for which it stands. And I know you all uphold that, and may we all continue to with civility, may we celebrate peaceful transition of government, which we have, and may we celebrate you all doing your darndest to represent the heart of the people, right? The will of the people, not the whim of the people. And I think you all do an incredible job. You all continue to listen, and for that, I am thankful, the, how much time? You know, as we go in, because there's so much work that goes into what's here. You know, as you talk about these financial reports, the general fund, anywhere I highlighted here with my own marker, greater than is good thing. You all are financially responsible and continue to be, and I want you to know, my generation cares about that more than they might get up here and publicly say. We appreciate fiscal prudence and fiscal responsibility. That's positive. Put good or bad in these things. Put good or bad. That's good. That's $5 million to the good over what you budgeted. Good or bad, $3 million, good or bad, $1.7 million. Yes, the reserves. It says you wanted to have 41 in reserves, now you have 61 in reserves. That means you guys are being incredibly fiscally responsible, and I want you to know there's a lot of people that care deeply about this. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. And in case you are keeping track, it's 892 pages in the packet tonight. All right. Come on back up. We're going to be dealing with the consent calendar. These are typically items of a routine nature, and they're usually adopted with a single motion. Does anybody wish to pull any of these for comment? I do have one...
4.06, if we could.
4.06, 4.06. I'll make comments on 4.13, 14, and 15, and Mr. Winty wishes to speak on 4.01. Okay, Mr. Winty.
Thank you, sir. As a city of laws, you follow them. I wanted to speak on all consent items, but I can only put one item up there, I believe, per the rules and regs. But I just want to again say thank you, and as I went through the consent calendar, just totaled up with a calculator, and the numbers within the consent calendar, and I don't know if it was above or below, but it was right around $9 million. In the consent calendar, it flows through, it's not all in one period, it's not all in the likes, but just knowing the magnitude of what you all are managing and the fiscal responsibility afoot, people are looking at it. We should all be aware of that consent calendar, because someone right now, y'all are consenting to what adds up with my simple little calculator to $9 million. But I just again want to say thank you to you all for reading it. I did read all of it. I hope I didn't read it at the same level of detail that you did, because that's y'all's responsibility. Mr. Alessio and your team for what you do, you bring forward, I know I should speak to you, no one behind. Again, I'm appreciative of this, my generation is appreciative of this, of the people, for the people, by the people. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. And 4.06, and it just happens that that's $4.7 million that Mr. Winty was referring to.
Just like that, and all from Measure A1, I believe, so that's not even city money. But it's, my concern was that I have heard a couple of comments from the neighborhood surrounding this project that Sunflower Hill is no longer involved with, and when we approved it, that we want to make sure, and they want to make sure, that those conditions haven't changed because it went to MidPenn, that it is still going to be the same facility and not, the rumor around the neighborhood is it's going to be apartments open to anybody, and I want to make sure that that doesn't happen, because we've...
We can assure you that is not the case. It is, the project remains exactly as proposed, 44 units affordable to folks with developmental disabilities. Original developer was MidPenn and will remain in place, the property manager, MidPenn, will also be in, remain.
So they'll be an onsite manager still?
Yes.
Good.
Overseen by MidPenn as originally proposed. The types of financing in place is going to remain the same, and the services and the service providers that will provide the services to the folks who reside there, affordability levels will also remain the same. So for all intents and purposes, nothing has really changed, other than a change, a slight change in the partnership and ownership.
Perfect. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for bringing that up and clarifying that, because I had heard some concern. Also, just a few comments on 4.13, 4.14. These are resolutions regarding software and cybersecurity. I bring this up because I want to highlight the fact that the city is taking action. Some of you may have known that we were attacked by a virus recently, the computer system in the city of Livermore, and we have fought back, we have largely recovered, but this is going to be an ongoing effort, and just wanted to highlight the fact that we are aware of this, and we are continuing to ensure that the, we have systems in place for cybersecurity with the city in the event of, in the event of any future attacks. Also for 4.15, a resolution approving the naming of the Civic Center Emergency Operations Center. So this Saturday, November 2, at the Community Meeting Hall at Pacific and South Livermore Avenue, we're going to be celebrating the 150th anniversary of the founding of the city of Livermore. The plat mat was filed on October 4, and the map was approved on November 4, 1869. So we'll be celebrating that at our new Emergency Operations Center meeting facility. By the way, this is also the 150th anniversary of the Transcontinental Railroad completion that was completed on May 10, 1869, and the Transcontinental Railroad came through Livermore. And also, it is the 150th anniversary of the creation of Dmitri Mendeleev's Periodic Table of Elements, and Livermore is on that periodic table of elements as Element 116, Livermoreum, created by a team of scientists from the Flav Institute in Dubna, Russia, and scientists from Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory right here in town, and they were able to name Livermore, as I said, one of only six cities in the world with that honor. So from 12, excuse me, from 1:00 to 2:00 at the Community Meeting Facility, we will be naming the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, and that will be called the William Mendenhall Community Room. So as you walk in, the John Shirley Council Chamber will be to your left, and the William Mendenhall Community Room will be on your right. So come on down Saturday, celebrate the 150th anniversary of the founding of Livermore, and celebrate your new Emergency Operations Center, and tour the building and have some snacks. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Moved by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving to our public hearing, 5.01, a hearing to increase the affordable housing in lieu fee. Fran Reisner. Ms. Reisner?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight for City Council's consideration is approval of updated affordable-for-sale prices, rental rates, maximum income limits, and an updated affordable housing in lieu fee. The maximum income limits for Council's consideration are adjusted by household size and range from extremely low to moderate income levels. These limits are adopted annually by City Council and are applicable for households participating in the city's affordable rental and homeownership programs. The city uses income limits that are published annually by the California Department of Housing and Community Development for the Alameda County region, so that they align with many other state housing programs. The state calculates these limits off of a median income value that is determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually. The affordable sales prices for the city's homeownership programs are priced for 80% of area median or low-income households, and 120% of area median or moderate-income households. For example, the maximum annual income for a four-person household to qualify as low-income is $98,550 annual, and for a moderate income, it would be $134,050. Both the city's affordable-for-sale housing prices and rental rates are calculated so that a household pays no more than 30% of its gross income for housing costs. So the public hearing portion of this item is focused on updating the affordable housing in lieu fee for new for-sale residential development. The in lieu fee is used to fund affordable housing programs, such as the city's Down Payment Assistance Program, and new affordable housing developments, including, for example, the 114 units of senior and family affordable housing at Chestnut Square, and the 44-unit Special Needs Housing Community, which is now called Avance, we just discussed it as formerly Sunflower Hill Livermore. The method of calculating the in lieu fee is specified in the Livermore Municipal Code and is charged by right to developers for new residential developments of 10 units or less, or when a fraction of an affordable unit is required within a development. The fee represents 15% of the difference between the development costs of a market-rate single-family unit and the average price of an affordable unit. The intent is that the fee is economically equivalent to the cost of a developer providing onsite affordable units. Therefore, increases in costs and the prices of homes over the past couple of years has prompted a recommendation to increase the in lieu fee. The new proposed fee is recommended to be $28.52 per square foot, which is, it's actually a 12% increase since the fee was last reviewed in 2017. The new fee would be implemented for projects in 2020. It would take effect 60 days after it was passed. So staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution adopting the maximum income limits for the homeownership programs based on the California HCD limits, establishing maximum for-sale housing prices for the 2020 Affordable Housing Program, and updated rent limits for those programs, and updating the Affordable Housing in lieu fee for residential development to $28.52 per square foot. And that concludes my presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carling?
Yes. Thanks, Fran. I understand it would become effective 2020. We got a letter from a developer and was concerned in terms of the, on a project that we've already approved. So when, for a developer, when does, when does the fee, when do they have to pay the fee? When they take out the billing permit, when it gets approved? I'm a little unclear on that.
Typically, this would be when the project applies for a building permit, unless they had some other arrangement within an affordable housing agreement.
Okay.
But typically is when they apply for a permit, and that's when they're, it would lock in.
So for a developer that, for a project that gets approved here, it could be some time between our approval and the issuing of a building permit, is that true?
It could be, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Cooper?
Have we had a chance to calculate the difference in the cost of a house with the current fee per square foot versus the new one, and what the difference is to, I guess we consider them an average homeowner, we hate to think everybody has a, have a big income to be able to get in there.
I can tell you on the house that, on the letter that we got, it was a $10,000 increase.
Okay.
Out of a house that'll probably sell for 1.0x million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. As you know, obviously, the fees don't affect the price that the home ultimately sells for, that's set by the market. Sometimes developers make money on that, sometimes they don't, but ultimately, we do try and keep track of the overall fee load. Your fees are set by policy generally to recover the full cost of the impacts that they place on the community at large, and affordable housing is one of those impacts, and obviously, we know that, because we have an ongoing affordable housing challenge here in the community, and that is the same for all of your impact fees that are governed, both those governed by AB 1600 as well as those adopted locally.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, do you have a question? We have a card, so, okay. I am going to open the public hearing. We have a card from Mr. Scott.
Greg Scott, I guess fundamentally, I'm trying to figure out if affordable housing is a failure of the market and/or is it a failure of regulating the market. You're raising the rate by $3.16 a square foot, so a thousand-square-foot house, $3,160. Wow. And the total fee for a thousand-square-foot house now is going to be $28,520. So in the category of irony, you're making housing more expensive for affordable housing. Okay. I'm glad Ms. Reisner clarified, I was confused by that little statement, approximately 11% increase over two years. I got it that it was 12.4% increase, I was a little confused by that. Later, when we talk about the economic plan, the 6.0, that you lump in the council goals of homelessness and affordable housing, really, you should separate those out, because, you know, 80%, 120%, it's unaffordable to the homeless. So, you know, you did 72 units at Chestnut, five of them are for the homeless. There's, according to Ms. Reisner, when I spoke to her at the Human Services Commission meeting in September, there's around 200 under sheltered homeless here, and we're dealing with just a really small part of it. Your 17 to 18 million dollar 2.0 vintage, the project on North Livermore, that's going to be housing for at most 24 units. So many unsheltered, and it's just plain unaffordable, and you make housing more and more expensive. At 15% rate, so that means approximately that the difference is about $200 per square foot difference, if that's 15%. Wow. I just don't understand where we're going with affordable housing, because we're helping so few. I also just don't understand the lumping together with the homelessness deal when we're helping so few of the homeless actually get sheltered out of the whole population. Again, the point in time count is 264, which is, it's such an undercount, it's ridiculous, but I, I don't get it. It's just, it's insufficient. It's insufficient what we're doing, and I wonder how we can get there more timely in a better fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I'm going to close the public hearing. So we need a revenue stream, and unfortunately, the state of California has made it very difficult to create revenue streams, to provide resources for outreach to the homeless. So this is one of the mechanisms that we use, and is it the best system we've got? No, it's the one that we have. It is a great challenge, and we are be able to provide some housing. I know that you don't particularly agree with Vineyard 2.0, but that's going to take a number of people who are experiencing homelessness off the streets, will help them with wraparound services, so that they can be lifted to be self-sustaining, which will then allow another 25 to come in and hopefully be self-sustaining. So it is a challenge. We have two councilmembers up here that are committed to find ways to make this work. There is a group convening from the Alameda County Mayor's Conference on Wednesday that is going to be looking at strategies and hopefully piloting some of those strategies. So it is a difficult issue, but you understand that we have a commitment here to work to solve that. So I certainly appreciate your comments, and we are making some tremendous efforts. So it is a difficult issue, but you understand that we have a commitment here to work to solve that. So I certainly appreciate your comments, and we are making some tremendous efforts as best as we can. So with that, I'm going to bring it back to the council. In the letter that we received from the developer, he had suggested that with this, the most recent iteration, that the housing fees would exceed two hundred thousand dollars per unit, and he had suggested possibly a discussion around either a cap on fees or revisiting the mechanism and justification for those. So, we can still vote on the issue tonight, but it, as we consider this the next time around, perhaps to open up that discussion as far as the justification of the fee and the potential for a cap.
Yeah, I'm with you on that one, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Comments?
Excuse, excuse me, can you repeat the question?
Oh, no, no question, just, just to put that out there for the next time around as this, because we've gone through the methodology here, but as was pointed out, the fees on a single-family home are breaking two hundred thousand dollars, which that used to be the cost of a home. Of course, when you figure out the cost of a car today, it used to be the cost of a home as well. So it's, it is, it's stunning, but I think it's worth a conversation.
Can I just suggest that when you come back with that thought, make sure we have a chart of comparisons with the surrounding cities.
Okay, great. Any further discussion?
Yeah, well, I would, I would point out that that two hundred and fifteen thousand per lot is on thirty-four hundred square-feet homes, which seems like a very large home. So, I don't know. I'm, I guess I'm wondering about how that also plays out.
I wanted to speak to just the way we fund projects as a state, and the way we think about what affordable housing is and isn't. So I wanted to really appreciate that you, Ms. Reisner, that you started with that data. Every time I look at the affordable houses, affordable rents and sales prices targeted to eighty to eighty percent and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, it reminds me that our median income here is incredibly high, and it is nothing as compared to in the West Bay. This speaks to a regional problem, which we, we can only deal with in, you know, as a city. You know, so I appreciate your, your, your laying out the framework for it. I'm perfectly in favor of this, but I'm tremendously frustrated by the nature of how we fund affordable housing. It is difficult to build because it does not cost out. We fund it through other, you know, through, in this manner, by asking developers to either build or to pay in-Lu fees. And yet, you know, I am with you, Mr. Scott, I, it is enormously frustrating, and it's not something that, I, I think it's something that we, as a city council, the city staff, as a city, can't solve by ourselves. What we can do altogether is perhaps go out to the larger, to the state and to the federal government, because I think these are problems that have to be solved at every level of government, so.
And that's, so, kudos to our staff that takes the
Yes, absolutely.
The CDBG funds, the Community Development Block Grants that we do get from the federal government, which are woefully inadequate.
Amen.
But when I was back in D.C., the original proposal coming out of the White House was they were going to zero those out, and that there was going to be no funding for CDBG.
So.
So it's very tenuous. I agree with you, we need, we need better funding mechanisms.
Right, and so this is the opportunity, you know, to say, we are looking at one specific change that we're making for Livermore, which is all we can actually act on, but we can also, as a society, as a city and as individuals, act at the different levels that are necessary.
Well, I think it's somewhat, it's hopeful now that we've got some corporations that are stepping up and are committing
Yep.
Hundreds of millions of dollars to build affordable housing. I think that's a, that could be a game changer. Not everybody's participating, but I think that's, that's a good start, because they're one of the reasons that the cost of housing is going up, and why the cost of transit is going up, and yet, we, as local governments, are having to subsidize the housing and the transit to get the people to these multi-billion-dollar corporations. So I think it's appropriate for them to step up.
That's another conversation.
Yeah. Okay, so with that, we're not going to solve that. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll move.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right. So that's the public hearing, moving on to matters for consideration, six-point-oh-one, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-five Economic Development Strategic Plan. Here we have Mr. Vandewater.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Adam Vandewater, you're Director of Innovation and Economic Development.
Are you on? There we go.
How's that? There we go, now I can hear myself.
Much better.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Adam Vandewater, you're Director of Innovation and Economic Development. I'm joined today by my colleague Teresa De La Vega, and on behalf of the entire four of us in the department, we're very pleased to present to you today our Economic Development Strategic Plan. I have just a handful of slides here this evening, covering about thirty-two pages and nine months of work, but we'll get right into that here tonight. So, the entire document is in your packet and is in, on the city's website for public review, and reflects an extensive period of data collection and stakeholder and individual interviews. So we started back in April, and we presented to you some of that economic data at your April eighth council meeting, and then spent the time since then out in the community, meeting with members of the community in a couple of fashions, which we'll discuss, and are back here today with the results of that when we developed our work plan. So back in April, as a quick memory refresh, we presented what the data says about us as a community, and these indicators are almost entirely positive. We have positive population growth, but in a manageable way, averaging less than one percent a year. We have job growth, keeping pace with that population growth. We have near historic low unemployment rate. We have rising median household income, and by almost every indicator, our economy is very strong. We had mentioned at the time, and I've heard others say, this is the most talked-about, not-yet recession in American history, but there is a lot of concern that, that we may be entering a softer economy in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, something that we're keeping an eye on, and see, we've already exceeded the largest post-war expansionary period in American history last July, and what that could continue as it has elsewhere, or the business cycle could still be alive and well. So we're tracking that with a careful eye. So, since that April meeting, we've been out talking with a number of organizations, first in a series of focus groups with about twenty-five business groups, entrepreneurs, large employers, our two federal labs, the real estate community, community groups and advisory bodies, our Youth Commission, representatives of the diverse arts organizations, and we heard a lot of different things, and I won't try to say what every individual spoke to us over the course of those many hours of discussions, but they, they largely fell in a series of categories, and I list five here. The first is proximity, and the three intersecting circles there, what we presented in April, show that we, as a community, are at the intersection of a couple of talent pools, an innovation talent pool, driven by largely Bay Area tech and biotech, a fabrication talent pool, and this is your advanced manufacturing, your biotechnology, your research and science and R and D, and our large industrial facilities. We have over nineteen million square feet of industrial here in town, which is the lion's share through in the Tri Valley, and our industries largely reflect that. You'll see a few of the recognizable names here, from the labs to Form Factor, Kinetics, Gilleg, Lamb, et cetera, and that that was a very positive thing. Some challenges is we are, we do not have good transit connections. We are not Dublin and Pleasanton, we do not benefit from a BART station, and there's a long, complicated history there, you know better than I.
I'm working on that.
But there was a desire, a desire to have more connectivity to reach those surrounding workforces in the Central Valley, the East Bay, and the South Bay, both as places of employment and access to employees, that we had challenges in terms of accommodations, and I mean that in a couple of ways. One, the affordable housing conversation you just had, but also hotels. You heard members of the public talking about communities serving the role, because we haven't built new hotels here in town for a while, we have some in the pipeline that we're eagerly anticipating, and others in the application process to fill needs identified as part of the South Livermore Valley-specific plan. So looking forward to that. And then finally, a number of businesses mentioned, there aren't many locations to do corporate retreats, to do gatherings, to host visiting dignitaries or CEOs outside of their campuses in a couple of destinations in town, and wanting to have more variety and flexibility. In terms of workforce, a lot of the companies we interviewed talked about the forty percent increase in salary you can get if you weather the traffic into Silicon Valley and in San Francisco, and that they're competing for those same employees here in the Tri Valley, and having to sell the benefits of a shorter commute and the quality of life that we do have here, which leads me to the last bit, which was the branding, that if the employee that they are seeking is not of or from the Tri Valley, there aren't cohesive short segments that sort of sell some of that quality of life that they could use as a marketing and recruiting tool. We also, we didn't want to talk to just the usual suspects, and we made a concerted effort to get out and talk to residents where they currently exist. Don't expect you to read these tiny little microlabels here, but just want you to take away that when we talk to folks, we talk to those that reflect a diversity of our residents, both in terms of tenure here in Livermore. The orange segment in the top left is, I don't live in Livermore. These are folks who come to our, our special events, who come to our job fairs and our farmers' markets, who might work here but don't live here. And then around that circle, you have green is fewer than five years, blue is between five and fifteen years, yellow fifteen to twenty-five years, and light blue, more than twenty-five. And then in terms of age representation, we had the green category, under eighteen, blue eighteen to twenty-four, and kind of around the circle in a segmented section by age, and finally, the ethnic composition, largely dominated by white or Caucasian, which reflects the general demographics of our community. After a few demographic, demographic setting questions, we asked some very broad questions, starting with, what's the one thing you love most about Livermore? And we got a four-hundred-and-one responses, four-hundred-and-three total respondents to our survey, and they, they listed a number of things, from the downtown development to the small-town feel, to the sense of community, and the access to parks and recreation, and a couple of different ways of describing that in their own words here. We followed that with what one thing Livermore is missing in their terms, and that, we heard that in largely three categories. First is housing, and you've heard that already this evening. A couple of comments here that I found indicative, young people who come to work at the lab have nowhere to live, we haven't built apartments in decades, and we see that in the demographic research from Human Resources at the labs, that there's more and more of their employees commuting long distances from our east and our west, that there's a demand for a variety of housing stock. We are predominantly single-family, and that's a harder cost of entry to new entrance to the homeownership field, and attached or rental apartments, smaller apartments. One, one so far is to say there are more three-car garages than single-bedroom apartments in Livermore, starter homes, and we heard a number of folks say they've been here for many decades, they want their children and grandchildren to return to the community, and there isn't housing stock that they can afford here in town. So that was a common refrain. In terms of transportation, a number of comments about BART to Livermore, about Valley Link, and about comprehensive, fast linkage, other than cars and ACE across the Bay Area, and this kind of reflects the, the general mega-regional economic fabric of not only the Tri Valley, but throughout the entire mega-region. And then some more local bike lanes, access to downtown, and entrance to Livermore, public transportation, connectivity and trails more common, as well as electric vehicle charging. And the last thing that people commented a lot in terms of missing was related to quality of life, both affordability of activities and childcare, the wineries and making them a destination. There was a lot of discussion of the celebration of South Livermore and what the community has done, but how do we take it to the next level and make it a destination, that we don't have quality hotels, seeking youth activities. A couple of small checkmarks I'd like to put beside our planning to date is, a number of folks said, we want a bookstore, and now we have, next to Cream, a very small bookstore coming in, which was a direct result of these conversations out at the farmer's market and from the survey, and communicating with the bookstore, who's opening a branch from Pleasanton here. A butcher, a fishmonger, in at least a decent market, there is a butcher opening up on Third and L, thank you, that's under construction now. And another common theme was fifty-five-plus downsized residential development. The Groth Brothers site that's under construction right now will be single-level living. I'm in the process of moving my in-laws into similar accommodations outside of town, and it's a real demand here in town for that type of housing stock. We asked people to look ahead a little bit and see what are they most excited about, and a lot of conversation here about downtown in various forms, the renewal, the incubation of entrepreneurs, the development of the downtown core, the growing attention to the arts, more breweries and dining options, the city's plan for downtown, bankhead theater events, and some other things like water sewer, down to the wineries, so we can have agritourism, et cetera. So, a lot of comments looking forward. So then the challenge came, how do we marry those two? How do we take the data and merge that with the lived experience and create a work plan that makes some sense? And we tried to sort through all the responses we heard to coalesce around a couple of actionable items and to prioritize that item, those items around something that made sense. So we looked at other strategic plans and the way they had structured, and chose to go with a structure of goals, objectives, and key results. So our goals are fairly high-level community aspirations, starting with an encouraging and innovation-driven economy. This is a goal that you selected as a council in February. And then, secondly, to enhance Livermore's unique sense of place. We heard a lot of commentary about that sense of community pride and small-town feel and heritage to Livermore, and how do we retain that as we grow and change and amplify it? And then finally, ensuring Livermore's economy remains diverse, resilient, and inclusive. And this speaks to some classic economic development, so we make sure we retain our financial strength going forward, that we have equity of opportunity, that we're not just encouraging an innovation-driven economy and forgetting about, you know, recent high school graduates, or skilled labor, or other sectors, that we produce that variety of housing, and that we start planning for economic resiliency, and that can mean a couple of things. The fires and the power outages and the things we're experiencing in the season, but also that, that sense of if there is a downturn in the economy, are we consolidated in industries that might be harder hit by that downturn, and what do we do about that? Within the earlier goals, on encouraging an innovation-driven economy, we've given a lot of thought to what do we mean by that, and what can we do about that as a city and as a department. One that's been getting a lot of attention is Valley Link, and I'm pleased to see the region and the state paying attention to that in a number of ways. I'll be attending the California Economic Summit in two weeks, where the governor will be giving the keynote about regions' rise together and connecting Central Valley to the Bay Area through potentially the Tri Valley, which could have implications for transit planning, I'm hopeful. But it also means, how do you get around without necessarily having to rely on a personal automobile to do so? So if we're successful in that regard, how would you get from there to your origin or destination, from your home to the down? destination, from your home to the downtown, to your labs, to your place of employment? And even while we plan Valley Link, how can you get to downtown without a car? Can you use ride share? Can you use bicycles? Do we have the right lanes and infrastructure? Are there other personal mobility means of getting to and from where you need to go? And then how do we attract the talent that drives that innovation? What types of cultural events? What types of restaurants? What types of housing stock? What types of opportunities in real estate would they need to consider this as a place of employment or residence? And how are we continuing to invest in entrepreneurship through some of the activities we do downtown at the switch or, or elsewhere? And then one that we're looking at is, is given our existing building stock, how do we protect our commercial real estate for the things that we really want, that produce those jobs, that produce those revenues and that produce that innovation? Within the sense of place, looking at the visitor economy, how do we have opportunities for our guests who come to visit us to see the quality of life that we do have here? How do we allow our wine industry to serve not just a local population, but to continue to thrive with a regional group of, of customers? How do we continue to have great community events, our Fourth of July, our Downtown Streets Fest, a number of the things that really make this a fantastic place to be? And then how do we communicate that outwards to the point of recruitment and, and retention so that people kind of know what the little secret is here in Livermore? So those were, and in the strategic plan, you'll see specific key results within each of those, so we can measure, how are we moving towards those directions in an actionable way in the next three to five years? So we really wanted to see, are there decision points that happen in the near term that we can use to determine whether we are marching in the right direction? But we also recognize that there are some things that we're not going to accomplish in the next couple of years, but there may be community-wide conversations we want to initiate now. And within those three goals, those are things like transit-oriented development at South Front. If we are successful with Valley Link, we have Isabel Neighborhood Plan zoned and going through environmental review in the post-BART scenario. Where would a, a second stop be in, in Western Livermore and how would we be able to plan and zone that? And that's a much larger conversation, much broader than my department, but something that we should start thinking about in the coming years. How would you get to and from those locations to your destination, as we mentioned? We heard a lot from some of the, the wine growers that the Greenville Road Corridor could be a fantastic entry to wine country, but currently it's the edge of our community and it's along some fairly low-density industrial uses, which don't exactly provide a scenic corridor to a beautiful part of town. So how do we go about planning and thinking about that corridor? In terms of sustaining, enhancing our wine country, do we have appropriate infrastructure for guests to come to the tasting rooms, for managing water and sewer and for providing access and signage? I continue to hear about what other smaller boutique wine regions in California and across the country and world are doing in this regards, and are there best practices we can learn from to encourage and enhance that wine country going forward? Excited to be staffing the Commission for the Arts as of this past May and, and looking forward to doing a cultural arts master plan to start thinking of the next generation of arts here in Livermore and how that can connect to economic development. And then I've wanted to do an analysis of the tools, incentives and policies available to us to start looking at a more resilient economy here in town and to make that transition prior to an exogenous shock like an economic downturn or a fire or, or something else that would have implications. Want to make sure we're planning ahead to that. So we heard loud and clear back in April that strategic planning is a great exercise to undergo, but how does it change your thinking? What does it mean day-to-day to you at the staff? And we've already changed our thinking as a result of a lot of this discussion and a lot of the feedback we've been receiving. We've been looking in terms of our industrial space, which I think is really one of our economic strengths here in town. How do we make sure that we continue to attract and retain an industrial that is innovation-driven, that is job-producing, that is revenue-producing and isn't just serving other regions that, with truck traffic and, and low quality or, or light jobs and, and little to no revenue? So how do we differentiate between those and what policies can we as a community put in place to, to drive that? Again, Valley Link shows up here because that's really how people can get around through the region in a efficient manner. Within sense of place, a number of you have experienced our Sandbox Downtown, which is the lot on First, where we've had a couple of cultural events, and this is a place where we've really wanting to experiment with different opportunities downtown and invite others to be a part of the energy of downtown with a low cost of entry and then hopefully some enthusiasm to do something more permanently. As part of your nearly $9 million of consent calendar today, you approved a policy and program grant from the Commission for the Arts for a 2020 mural festival. So how would we structure that and in what locations and with what invited artists could really beautify some blank walls that otherwise might be defaced with graffiti? Again, the cultural master plan, Isabel, and business continuity. So these are some of the things that we've been thinking about in innovation and economic development. I want to thank all the members of the community that took their time to meet with us, to talk through some of their challenges and goals and to fill out our survey, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Very good. Well done. Thank you. Any questions? I do have cards, but we'll ask questions and then I'll open up the public comments. Okay. Questions? All right. Very good. I do have several cards, Greg Scott, Lori Souza and Carl Winty. Mr. Scott.
Greg Scott, can we put up the slide, the innovation-driven economy, please? No, keep, you have this one right here?
Ah, this is...
Yeah, right here. You put agriculture, forestry and fishing and hunting right at the bottom. Now, I can understand forestry, fishing and hunting being at the bottom, but trust me, you're going to be thinking about agriculture a lot more in the future. This is the heritage of this area. I understand why we're not thinking about it so much right now. We get, you know, we're putting 10 calories of energy to put one calorie of food energy into our bodies. We have Energy Dance, 130,000 British thermal unit diesel to get the food here to the store at a relatively economic rate. That's not going to be maintainable. Currently, the population on the planet is about 7.6 million people, billion, excuse me, 7.6 billion. We're growing by over 200,000 people per day. We're going to be thinking about food a lot more. From the energy standpoint, which we can't maintain, what we're doing to our soils on the, on the planet, we're losing about 25 to 75 billion tons of topsoil per year. A lot of the soils in the Midwest have lost half their soils. To forsake our agriculture here is not the wisest thing. That is definitely going to rise up in this thing because food is going to be very important. Also, the technologies are changing quite a bit. Out of UC Berkeley, there's the CRISPR technology. CRISPR is the clustered, regular, interspace, short, palindromic repeats. What that means is it's non-transgenic gene editing. The, the transgenic controversial ecology GMO editing is going to go the way of the buggy whip with this type of technology. So biotechnology in feeding the planet and that agriculture, that is going to have to rise considerably. On the quality of life slide, this one right here.
So what he's referencing here are some slides from the April presentation?
Okay, I'm sorry. There, there's a slide given in the handout. It's on the commuting, and I'm not sure what Element 116, oh, there it is, thank you, has to do with our quality of life so much, but it is in the elemental group that the calcogens, which oxygen's in. So we're taking oxygen, converting carbohydrates, and we're putting massive amounts of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere, and you can see it right here on the, on the graph with all the commuting. The average commuter in California is putting 4.3 tons of CO2 into the atmosphere per year from living in Modesto or Escalon or wherever to get to their job to work here or work wherever, so they have affordable housing. And then the higher earners you can see are commuting to Silicon Valley to make their $200,000 to survive. All this CO2, greenhouse gas, and no wonder why we're having horrific fires. So this is going to have to change also. We, we can't continue in this mode. And just to be brief about it, we're going about and just picking at our problems in a small way when they're going to become a major crisis: food, agriculture, the climate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Lori Souza, Carl Winty.
Well, good evening, Mayor Marshawn, City Council and staff. Lori Souza, today I'm representing the Board of Directors of the Tri-Valley Conservancy, and more specifically, I'm the Chair of the Economically Sustainable Agriculture Committee. And so this year, the Tri-Valley Conservancy is recognizing its 25-year anniversary, and we originated from the South Livermore Valley Area Plan. The City of Livermore was one of the leading partners in the development of this visionary document, and it has been over 25 years since this plan has been adopted. We believe it's an opportune time for a review and assessment of the efficacy of the South Livermore Valley Area Plan. We need an objective view of whether the original goals have been achieved and whether possible gaps remain to be addressed. The results of this assessment will directly impact the success of the economic development of the City of Livermore and other surrounding areas in the region. Therefore, we respectfully request that the City of Livermore, being one of the leading partners of the South Livermore Valley Area Plan, initiate a retrospective review and assessment of the plan's results and impacts and deliver direction for the next 25 years. Supporting local agriculture is the TVC's primary mission, and by achieving this, we support economic and environmental sustainability, which clearly aligns with the strategies for Livermore's economy to remain diverse, inclusive and resilient. Furthermore, the Tri-Valley Conservancy wants to contribute to this retrospective study by partnering with you and other appropriate organizations in its development. We support the city's 2020-2025 Economic Development Strategic Plan and look forward to helping you achieve its success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Souza. And finally, Mr. Winty.
This is fun stuff. Thank you, Carl Winty. Oh, she started it. Lori Souza, thank you for your leadership and being awesome. Greg Scott, I'm addressing you all. I appreciate Greg Scott because he always makes you think, and you got in there with some of the CRISPR and the other non-transgenic in terms of how you're moving genes around to make the world a better place. Fundamentally, food does matter. I'm a glutton for punishment. This is from 2004, the Tri-Valley Agricultural Cultural Enhancement Project, Water, Agriculture, Markets, How We Might Feed Ourselves. Here's how water and recycled water can get out. It's '02, it's '04. I know the ship has sailed, but there's a lot of the fundamental underlying. Here's the Working Landscape Agricultural Task Force from 2004. I read every page, every word, and it's interesting and the fundamental land hasn't changed. If you deliver water, you can grow. We can feed and we cannot combust carbon to make truck go place where people want to eat food, right? Thank you. Opportunities and constraints for expanding agriculture in the Tri-Valley. I'm not saying it is not without constraints. There's a lot of good work and research that's been done and the underlying doesn't matter much. I want to just again express, express my profound thanks. Strategic planning is critical. What is the purpose? What are you looking to achieve? How are you going to get there? Mission, goals and objectives, strat plans, both as a compass and communicators, providing clear written direction to ensure that crises or distraction don't derail the strategic goals, putting the direction of this city up there. That's why you have people come in, smart, interesting people that listen to the community. That's what's great about this town, is you actually all do listen. Process drives outcome. I have a pop quiz. I'll take your answers offline. Steve Spadawski, you can email it to me or text me before they do. Where the, where the Venn diagram comes together, the three circles, it's a triangle, that triangle has a specific name. What is it? So the strategic plan, you've been reading John Doerr, Doer, OKRs, right? Man, it's good stuff. Let's get after it. Encourage an innovative-driven economy, further enhance Livermore's unique sense of place and elevate the city's standing as a world-class destination. Ensure the economy raises diverse, inclusive, maybe we talk about the homeless, maybe we talk about the destitute, maybe we're talking about high tide raising all ships. Inclusive and resilient. Every level of government goes to fight homelessness. I don't have a lot of time. Quick story, Wine Spectator, big publication, come out and say, hey, we want to do a look at your family, the history, what your family's about, the history of Chardonnay. It's not there, but I appreciate it. Maybe more time because he distracted me. So they came out and they go through this article, they talk about Livermore Valley, who we are and what it is. They're about to write it up. He goes to his editors, his editor goes, no, it's not yet a real growing region because there are not world-class amenities whereby to put people. World-class amenities are holding us back. Economic tide raises all ships. Take care of the destitute by all means, right? You feel weird up here when I'm not missing meals and people are talking about that, but it raises all ship. Let's do it well. Let's keep in mind that we have beautiful resources in that South Valley. Thank you for what you do. I would love to get a drink, get a beer. Am I allowed to hand him anything, sir? No. Namaste, y'all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Winty. Okay, bringing it back to the council, I'm going to close the public comment period. Questions, comments? Vice Mayor Carling.
Well, I want to thank the folks for speaking tonight, and thanks to Adam and his team for a very thorough strategic plan. I think I was one of the people early on that said you needed to change your behavior if you're going to write a strategic plan. I appreciate that. Now, the next thing I would like are metrics. I appreciate your objectives and the key results, but I, and this is a, maybe it's a nitpick, I don't know, but admittedly, I'm not trying to distract from all the hard work, but to use words like recommend as many times as you have, I'd like to see it at some point being more specific. So just picking one, recommend new measures to preserve developmental land for high-value, job-rich uses. So what would be those new measures? I mean, I don't know what they are, but I, I think I'd like to see, so how do I know when you've achieved your key result number three under that objective four, recommend new measures? Just when you do it? I mean, that doesn't seem that hard to me. So I, I think the hard part is actually achieving new measures, and I think those are the kind of metrics that I would like to see. I don't think you should rewrite this, but as you're, as you're thinking about how to move forward with this, I, my suggestion would be to, to develop some really, some key metrics that are measurable and not just, you know, I'm going to talk to my neighbor or I'm going to read, watch a video or read a book about how some other community did this, economic development. So that would be my recommendation moving forward is really to, to see if you couldn't establish some key measurable objectives.
I very much appreciate that, and we had a lot of comments on that. In fact, in the strategic plan, we quote Tom, John Doerr, who Carl mentioned, as the format we chose, the objectives and key results as a vaccine against fuzzy thinking. And in reviewing strategic plans, there is a lot of fuzzy language. And as we kind of went through this process, we realized that in part, that is a frustrating thing you can't really pin to the wall, but in part, it's reflecting that it is a strategic vision for a community. It is not an actionable work plan per se, that there are detailed work plans with actionable key performance indicators within each objective and within each broader goal. The key results here are meant to be near-term things that we can see. Did we do it or did we not? Did we make a recommendation? Did we initiate a consultant study? Did we get an action plan? Did we achieve a, a work product or did we get one of our partners at the state or the region to do the same? But absolutely agree that we can continue from the guideposts that this creates to start developing those key, key performance indicators going forward, because some of these are, would be hard to tell. How, how would we know if we did it or not? And some of them are going to require more inputs. We didn't want to presume what the community would think about a particular general plan update item or what the state or the region would do in terms of specific legislation or what a consultant would even inform us on a specific topic after more detailed response and review. But we wanted to be, and this was the challenge, we wanted to set high-level goals and objectives, but we wanted to be realistic and pragmatic about it so that we would have specific things that we were trying to achieve within the near-term horizon.
We wanted to be very specifically aware of the fact that we are not decision-makers as your staff. That is not our role or our job. Our job is to develop. Our job is to recommend. Our job is to research. Our job is to start the community conversation or help start that under your direction. And so that maybe led to language, which is different than if I were a private corporation where we would basically get X done, but I think one of the things we wanted economic development to do in particular was to start those difficult conversations where there's no absolutely right answer on, do you adjust your urban growth boundary, for example? And that's a community discussion, but I think your point of sort of saying, all right, now we need to track ourselves and figure out, how are we doing against that objective, I think is an absolutely great point.
Right. And Ms. Souza's... Right. And to Ms. Souza's point, I mean, is this something that is under consideration?
Which specifically?
The Tri-Valley Conservancy 25-year, you know, retrospective and then looking ahead, that Lori just brought up.
Is it under consideration? Yes, absolutely. We're trying to put something forward that reflects the community, not just our department's vision, and make sure that it's in collaboration with all of our partners' visions as well, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Warner?
I would also like to thank you for good work. And, you know, in the past, I've had roles both in strategic planning and analysis as well. So I think this is a good set of topics and direction. I mean, of all the things you could have focused on, I think it's a good set. But also, you know, we've got a bunch of scientists up here, so we are going to look for some numbers here. And along with that, I would also suggest some kind of date goals for some of these things. And some of them are, did we achieve getting another whatever in this period of time? So I would, help us with, what are reasonable expectations for timeframes? And so we're talking about a really nice resort hotel out in the wine country. We're talking about ValleyLink. We're talking about a number of things here, and the real time horizon where we could expect it could be helpful.
Yeah, we expressly looked at a 2020 to 2025 horizon because that felt long enough to be planning ahead, but not so long enough to be.
Sure. And what I'm saying is, within that horizon, I'm not just saying somewhere in there, I'm saying now, realistically, when? Because many of these things here, I think, are too closer to 25 than 20.
Right. And so you saw ValleyLink as an example, the most aggressive timeline for that undertake construction is to begin in 2024, I believe, is the latest, and all the planning and environmental review and financing that would have to happen between now and then. And so there's a number of intermediate decision points like regional support for it, which is a relatively new phenomenon in the conversation, state-level support, whether it gets included in the Faster Bay Area conversation, if the governor is behind it, some things that we are starting to inject ourselves into the conversation about to start to gather that, that can occur in the next 24 to 36 months.
So I, you know, just as you talk, I mean, the time horizon here might need to be more than five years because some of these things are going to require getting the community's support, or a lot of different external stakeholders' support. So some of the initial steps are actually showing that we're getting some momentum on those things. So
Absolutely.
I'm just saying, along the lines of what Vice Mayor Carling was saying, let's just have a little more clarity on the time horizon, not only how much, but when.
So one of the things we, as staff, were talking about this just this week was how to translate this. So this has been an effort to get to this point, but how do we make this into an actionable work plan? Who in our office is responsible for each one, on what timeframe, with what key performance indicator?
So what I'm saying is, this is a good set of topics. I agree with what you're focusing on, and now it's time to go to the next step.
Appreciate that.
I love the work you've done, and therefore, we're going to ask for more.
Great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Okay. So, yeah, we've got a bunch of scientists up here, but I'm a scientist of a different kind. I do qualitative research, so I love this stuff. One of the things I really appreciate about this is that you have, you've got information about who answered the study, so we know who's in and we know who's not being represented. You know, for example, with what's your ethnicity, we know that who answered there is not entirely representative of who is actually, lives in the city. So that's an interesting point just going forward. I actually do agree that as we go forward, I'd like to know what the measurables are, but I also want to continue the focus on what the meaning is. And the slides where you've asked, what is Livermore missing? What is one thing you're excited about? That gives a much more of a look and feel, and that tells us in a non-measurable way what's working and what isn't. I think it's important to keep that, you know, keep taking the temperature in that ways we go forward. I appreciate the way of building community using different forms of transportation, particularly the last mile pieces, which enable people to get places quickly, and but also to be in places where they're walking and where they're seeing each other and in community. And there was one other thing. Oh, yeah, to Mr. Scott's point, I thought that was very, and actually to Mr. Winty's point about sewer lines to the South Livermore area. I'm not sure who mentioned that, but this idea that paying attention to where agriculture is going, or other industries are going, what we have now is one point. Where we might be going in the future is another. So one of the things I've been very interested in, not for myself, but in paying attention to, is restorative agriculture. As we go forward with that, and that is something that, given our agricultural background, we could well be involved in. Who knows? So I'm interested in not, and I don't, so I don't know that we are going to continue to be agricultural. I don't know what that right balance is, but what I would encourage us to think about is not only what we have, but where we think we're going. And I think you are on that track, and I encourage you to keep going. Thank you very much. This has been so much fun to watch.
Not much else to say. However, I am going to thank you for the effort in this. I can see where we're going here. And not being an engineer, but a banker, I am looking forward to results, and I'm kind of going to echo Vice Mayor Carling on what he was saying, just so we can have some measurable, somewhere, where do we go with this, you know? In my world, that's how we got a hold of things. You take ideas, you turn them into something. So I really am looking forward to the progress. Thank you.
One of the things that, as we're coming together, and since you mentioned the agriculture, with the technology that we have today, where agriculture was at one time a very labor-intensive activity, and the site that you had was jobs in agriculture, we have TopCon, and TopCon now has technology that runs bulldozers and graders with an iPad. Instead of having people survey, they fly a drone over a site that would take two weeks to survey, and it surveys the site in 20 minutes. Instead of handpicking grapes, we now have mechanical harvesters. So there were still a very potent agricultural economy here, but it's no longer as labor-intensive as it once was because we're using more and more technology. The types of jobs have changed, so instead of someone actually picking the almonds or picking the pistachios, now they're repairing the machine that shakes the trees, you know? So those are the sorts of things. So we're seeing technology evolve, and that's what's so exciting about this, is we're looking at those trends, and as we can anticipate those, then we'll see what jobs we need to fill. And that's one of the things that we're doing right now with Innovation Tri-Valley, is to follow those trends. And, but this is very good work. Certainly appreciate a lot of effort in here and look forward to seeing how all these come together, especially the things like around the transportation and the housing. If not here, perhaps Matters initiated, but the point that Ms. Souza pointed out about the retrospective of the study on the South Livermore Valley Area Plan, I think that's important, especially as we look at the running of the sewer line down Tesla Road, because that will complete the South Livermore Valley Area Plan, and we've gotten kind of a hiccup now that hasn't allowed us to do that. So would this be the appropriate time to bring that up, or should we wait for Matters? Okay, very good. And, great. So did you need a motion or to accept this, or just?
This is presented for your information.
Just in question.
We asked just that you receive the document as a guiding document for the city.
Okay. Did you need a motion for that? Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you. Great work. Certainly appreciate that. And I saw the slide of the pop-up event downtown, so that was great fun.
Thank you.
Well, he said sure. You said no.
No.
Okay, so I have one yes, two no's. Okay, we're good?
You're fine.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Great work. All right. 6.02, this is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, and all of the other supporting documents that went into that. This is a tremendous effort, and certainly appreciate all of the great work that went into it. The synopsis brochure is fantastic and well-supported by the rest of the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Doug Alessio, your Administrative Services Director. This evening, we're presenting you the financial results from fiscal year 2018-19, and discussing the first quarter results for fiscal year 1920, and also doing a HCIF, Post-Community Impact Fee Update, as part of this presentation. So we have audited results for fiscal year 1819 in the form of a comprehensive annual financial report. I will frequently refer to that as a CAFR, just so that you have the acronym down. This is our report. It was an unmodified audit opinion dated September 30, 2019. So a couple of changes here. Some language has changed in the opinion from unqualified to unmodified. That's a change that's happened in governmental accounting. And the other interesting thing to note here is the opinion date of September 30, 2019. Most first-year accounting students learn that accounting is important for accuracy, consistency, and timeliness. Make it a useful tool. So we've really worked on the timeliness here. These are some of the first audited financial statements available for municipality and the state for this fiscal year. So that's pretty exciting. We're out ahead of most people being completed with our audit for acceptance tonight. Of course, we also do the Popular Annual Financial Report, which is a Cliff Note version of our financial statements meant for more of a casual reader that doesn't have a financial background. So we try to make it a little bit more visually appealing and interesting of a report. The CAFR is probably close to 200-some-odd pages. The CAFR is a very easily consumable couple dozen. So it's a beautiful document. It summarizes what's going on here financially, and although not required, we think it's a good communication tool for the community. All right. So we, I frequently get up here, talk a lot about the General Fund, and the last time I did this, I started to give you a little bit more information on government-wide results. So the government-wide net position for the city over the history of the past 10 years looks like this. Understand that a bunch of your net position of $607.5 million for the fiscal year is net investment in capital assets. So that is things you can't spend. That's water treatment plant, that's airport, that's the police station, the library, and those sorts of things. Also, part of your net position is restricted to certain uses, and then there's the unrestricted version, oops, let me go back, which is really your discretionary money citywide to do various things with. So our unrestricted citywide net position is $85 million. So most of that resides in your enterprise funds. Your general fund actually has a negative net position because we are now recognized long-term liabilities like pension obligations and other post-employment benefit obligations in the general fund.
Can I just ask one question?
You certainly can.
These aren't exactly the same kind of dollars, right? So the net investment is kind of depreciation book stuff, and some of these other things are actual investments that are mark-to-market.
Correct.
So it's not exactly this. So is there any, so I just want to point that out, is there a way to put these in the same kind of dollars?
So this is net position, which is exactly what you described. That could be a variety of things. It could be investments. It could be a plant and other things you own. So when we get further in, and you see a balance sheet that explains sort of how the general fund's doing, most of that balance will show you whether it's cash or. Right. So, again, this is government-wide, so this is all of your funds combined. This is a historical government-wide revenues and expenses, so that you can see, it's always nice when revenues exceed expenditures. So as Carl would have said, good slide, because this is a positive thing. So, you know, you could see that revenues are down slightly from last year. Last year, we had the highest revenues the city's ever had, a little over $200 million entity-wide. This year, we're also breaking $200 million, but it went down slightly. So it's an interesting point, and our expenses are the highest they've ever been, close to $200 million, government-wide. All right. So just to give you an idea of the makeup of the government-wide, and this is the reason why I typically focus on the general fund, that's 50% of your, of all your funds is the general fund, and it's the one we focus on because that's where your discretionary spending goes. Special revenue funds make up about 11% of your government-wide financial statements. Those are things like gas tax and other revenue that has strings of tax or resources that can only be spent on particular items. You have capital project funds that make up about 2%. You have debt service funds that make up about 2%. You have permanent fund, which makes up less than 1%, so it's such a small piece. It shows a zero on the graph. You have enterprise funds, which is another big component of your financial picture, making up 27%. And then we have internal service funds like fleet and workers' comp and risk that make up about 8%. So it gives you an idea of the composition of the citywide financial picture. So one of the things I want to show you is also, we show the slide when we talk about, hey, the city's three biggest revenue sources are property tax, sales tax, and development-related fees. A lot of the development-related fees live outside of the general fund, so I'm showing them here with entity-wide information. So some of these do live in the general fund, like transient occupancy tax, and you can see that's been growing over time, when probably reflective of the need of additional hotel space. You can see that business license income has rebounded pretty well since the recession, but down a little bit this year. That has mostly to do with construction piece of our business license income. You can see that permits, again, are slightly down from last year, that our plan check inspection fees are holding about the same because of the dip. We have a reduction. We have connection fees, and we have impact fees. So you can see that our trend is going slightly downward, and we had a really good year in 1718. 1819 has turned out fine, and we're in the black, but you could see a reduction in our resources coming in the door. It's happening. And that gets us to, hey, the current economic expansion, and just how it is now the longest expansion we've had in the history of time that they've been tracking this, so 123 months. So just be aware that when we talk about our three revenue sources, property tax and sales tax, those are both lagging indicators, and your development-related income is usually a predictive indicator of where we're going. Okay?
So you said slightly downward. That doesn't look slightly downward.
Well, understanding impact fees fluctuate pretty heavily. So when you look at the things that are a bit more stable, they're down a little. Impact fees are significantly down, and that's one of the reasons it makes the slide worth showing.
Yeah. Yes, but in some sense, you might consider that a leading indicator, which is what you're talking about with respect to the thing, or are these lagging? What I'm trying to say is, this is not slightly downward, and does it portend anything?
I think it pretends that we're headed towards an economic slowdown at some point in the future, and that's one of the reasons for showing it. So now we're going to focus on the general fund. So this is results for 1819. So sources for the general fund was a little over 118 million, and uses So, sources for the general fund was a little over $118 million, and uses are slightly under at $116.2. So, we are in the black, and your reserves grew by 2.1 in total for the year. So, just to give you an idea, over time, we've been experiencing a pretty good economy lately, but you could tell the two lines are coming together. So, meaning that for the past 120-some-odd months, we've had a really nice economy. It's good to see our revenue should have been well above our expenses, but as we head towards the future, those two lines are going to grow closer together, especially as we head towards an economic slowdown.
Could you go back there for one second?
Sure.
Oh, there we go. I'm noticing neither of those are straight lines, so the expenditures are curving upwards a little bit more rather than, you know, they're going up, which I believe is not, I think we're expecting that to happen.
Yes.
And I'm noticing that the blue line continues to go. I mean, we have this two years ago, it goes almost flat, and then for the next two years, it goes up, you know. And what I'm wondering is, how much of that is in the noise and how much of that is predictive of anything? So, if you look, you know, there's quite a bit of jumping around. That's a technical term.
Understood. So, there is a bit of noise in some of the numbers, as you pointed out. If we have one-time revenues or an adjustment, like the state changed the way that they allocate sales tax, you know, last year it impacted our number. So, there's a little bit of noise in here. But when you talk about the $118 million or $116 million, there's nothing significantly noise-wise that's driving this. Downtown and capital spending might be, so, but a lot of that hasn't occurred. It's planned to occur. So, although we've ramped up on preparing for that, which is driving some of our expense numbers, so that would be the one item that I would say is sort of in the noise or driving it a little.
So, the question is, as you pointed out, the revenues are not under our control as much as the expenses.
Right.
And given the previous thing, slide of what might portend out there, is there a need for us to adjust our thinking about the expenditure line?
Well, so far, we've had a pretty conservative approach to the expenditure line. So, you're doing things like constraining the staffing levels. That really helps control the expenditure line. Okay? So, those are things that are already happening and part of the budget, so...
So, my question is, I know there are things that are already happening. What my, is, do we need to adjust our thinking about what should be happening in the future? Or do we, what I'm suggesting is, we need to pay close attention here and maybe more frequently on an annual basis, perhaps?
So, your structural expenses and your structural revenues are actually well-balanced. I think the big choices for you in your near term is the pace of progress on discretionary projects. Those are relatively very expensive, and they will either require you to use cash on hand, which you'll hear more about later, what you've got on hand, and/or to borrow money, both of which limit your future opportunities to react to changing circumstances. So, I think as we continue to progress, that's why, for example, you're going to get a pretty comprehensive look tonight at our snapshot. It's literally just a little while old. September 30 is sort of where you're getting data from here. But I think that's the biggest piece that you guys need to be thinking very carefully about is, what do we build and when do we build it and how do we pay for it?
All right. So, this slide is just a chart showing the 2018-19 budget versus actual. We thought we would actually dip into reserves by about $2.8 million last year, and thanks to revenues coming in a bit stronger and some capital projects that didn't quite get as far as we'd hoped, and savings and operating expenditures were actually $2.2 million added to our reserves. So, about almost a $4.8 million swing to where our reserves would end the year. So, the general fund uses by category, we usually talk about 75% of every dollar that we spend gets spent on personnel and personnel-related expenses. This year, we're actually coming in a little bit lower at 64%. Some of that, again, has to do with the constrained staffing and using consultants to accomplish some of the work. Whenever we hire a consultant to do part of the work, they actually show up in supplies and services instead. Okay? And another reason why it's below our 75% norm is our capital improvements has grown to about 7% of our general fund budget, and it's usually about 2% to 3% the general fund budget. So, that's impacting what you usually see here as personnel-related expenses, and then the last piece is transfers out. So, this is how we traditionally view it. We had a change last year. We adopted the LPFD-JPA agreement, which says the JPA is now allowed to hold assets and hold liabilities, and it's more of a traditional entity. So, our contributions to that, when we do budgeting, we talk about staffing, we consider half of the staffing to be our staff, but they're actually not. They're the staff of the JPA. So, for financial reporting purposes, our contributions to that actually will end up showing up in supplies and services in the future. So, I would like to sort of explain the difference. When you look at our CAFR, if you dig through here and the way that FIRE is now shows as a contribution to another entity, it shows up in supplies and services. So, our personnel-related expenses actually are about 50% of our budget, not 75, and supplies and services grow to 38. Okay? But there is a portion there, 14% of that 38 is actually LPFD personnel-related expenses. Okay? So, this is a change, and going forward, we'll show it both ways because we're usually used to seeing that there are employees and talking about them as though there are employees, and those cost categories are still important to us, especially for budgeting purposes. Reporting-wise, we report it slightly different because of generally accepted accounting principles.
The other thing you pointed out in supplies and services, there are two types of personnel-related things. One is the consultants, but there's the other, which is really like staff og. So, is it possible to pull out the work, you know, the other part of the personnel that are in supplies and services that are really the equivalent of employees in that sense? Is there any of that in there?
So, what shows up in there is consulting costs, which we do use consultants to augment.
What I'm saying is, I understand consulting, and it could be in supplies and services, but there are a lot of times where there are contracts for people that are really just replacing the equivalent of what would otherwise be an employee, not a consulting, but it's a longer-term kind of engagement. You might not...
Like a limited-term employee with that, is that what you're asking?
Well, I mean, there are two things that usually show up in there in my experience. One is true consulting, which is very short-term, limited engagement with a defined product. The other thing that happens is that temporary workers are hired to fill a particular need.
So, here, temporary workers show up in your personnel-related because they're actually city staff that we pay with a city paycheck. So, they're, I'm looking at Jason because there's a concern about grouping that data with personnel costs. I'll let Jason explain.
Correct. When it comes to labor law, if you have somebody who is on a contract basis, an independent contractor, if they are deemed to be actually an employee based upon supervision status, how they're treated, their workplace, that can arise into situations where they're misclassified and create exposure for the city. I think what you're looking for in the services and supplies are long-term contracts that the city may be entering into for someone to provide like something similar to plan check services or something like that. I think that's what you're looking for, those longer-term contracts where they're still independent contractors.
Right. I didn't make you nervous. I didn't mean to make you nervous by calling them employees. What I meant was just that, because I know that if, you know, there are time limits for how long they can be engaged and things like that. I was just trying to distinguish between the longer-term engagements where they're providing a service, basically, for the community versus the ones that are one-off consulting contracts. That's all.
Can I ask a couple of specific examples? So, for example, where would we put janitorial costs? What bucket would that fall in?
That's supplies and services.
Okay. And what about construction workers on the EOC?
That, again, that would be in the CIP. So, those, so that would be a capital improvement cost.
A different one. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I mean, if you were going to be incredibly blunt, about 98% of your budget has something to do with people somewhere working for someone. The cost we spend on paper clips and paper and literal supplies is extremely small. We are generally buying people's expertise and people's labor under a whole bunch of different ways, short-term, long-term, because they've got special expertise, because they're essentially a buffer. They can actually adjust their hours, timing, and response to meet a very specific need for us and then bring that way down. So, let us do some thinking about maybe how to talk about some of those different types because there are very different types. Plan check services, which lasts over a year, geotechnical services, which are on-call over a period of years, but they come and go, and somebody does a study for two weeks for us and is done. And those are very different kinds of services.
You have two categories here, one services and one supplies.
Yeah. Boy, your supply would be very small.
I really appreciate the detail, you know, the more detail. And honestly, I'm not sure I need it, but boy, it's sure interesting.
Appreciate that. And again, the capital improvement and transfers out. Just wanted to show that the accounting change because of LPFD showing up in supplies and services in a lot of the data. So, wanted to show it both ways. So, again, this is just another representation of the costs where we're, you know, slightly over budget, excuse me, under budget and personnel, over and supplemental, supplies and services slightly under. Capital outlay being different than capital improvement. Capital outlays, the purchase of any piece of equipment over $5,000 as opposed to capital improvement, which is construction projects of public facilities and improvements, and then transfers. So, for '18, '19, this is our actual versus budget uses by category. So, you'll see that our supplies, excuse me, our personnel services and supplemental, we came in slightly under budget when those are put together. Because of the savings in personnel services, we probably put a little bit more money into the workers' comp reserves. That's why you're seeing the supplemental personnel, which workers' comp expense is being slightly over budget and salaries and such being under budget. So, decided to make a contribution to our workers' comp reserves there. Our supplies and services budgets, you know, pretty accurate, only a half million dollars under budget on a $44 million budget. That's pretty good. And again, we had a pretty healthy CIP budget of $9.4 million, and we actually got $7.8 completed. That's a lot of capital improvement for our general fund. Usually, it hovers around $2 to $3 million a year. So, a lot of good progress there. You see the EOC, you see Veterans Way, things like that are helping contribute to that This is general fund sources by major category. Property tax making up 30%, sales tax making up 30, so they're neck and neck. I think sales tax slightly beat out property tax this year. Then, we have other taxes that make up 14%, and that's franchise tax, business license tax, transient occupancy tax, and real property transfer tax make up the categories in that 14. And then, we have all others, which includes a variety of smaller miscellaneous incomes. So, you'll notice that last year, our property tax actually came in a little over budget, about $1.1 million over budget. So, that was nice. I think that's the first time in the nine years I've been here that that's happened. I usually, when I'm estimating property tax, I found in the other eight years, I've come in slightly under budget instead of over. So, this was interesting to me that we actually broke the budget. On sales tax, the state changed their, the way that they require sales taxpayers to report and the way that they distribute income. So, we actually came in under budget about $643,000. What that's doing is making us have a pretty good sales tax year this year because the payments that should have been attributed to last year because of the change in the methods by the state in distributing the sales tax meant that some of the sales tax attributed to last year is actually doesn't, isn't getting distributed until this year. And actually, I still think there's several hundred thousand dollars that were owed that hasn't been distributed from last year in this year. So, we actually came in under budget by 643, I mean, which isn't good in revenue, in sales tax. And so, it still is higher than your property tax, number one revenue category. So, total revenue, about $2.8 million over, which was nice, and our transfers in were slightly lower. And that has to do with how we actually account for CIPs. We used to, when we did a job in a capital improvement fund or a special revenue fund, we would transfer money back to the general fund, and we're actually recording those expenses in those funds. So, our budgeting will catch up with that with this next year's update. So, we're a little under budget there, but that's because of a change. All right. So, this is a slide I show every year, which is your property tax history. Pretty interesting slide, and you can see, you know, that the city's doing really well with assessed value and with property tax revenue. Sales tax, again, it's a lagging indicator. It's a little bit, it's a lot more sensitive than property tax is to the economy. So, this is one that's worth watching. Even though it's a lagging indicator, it lags much closer than property tax does. You know, I was talking with Mark about this earlier, and he was just commenting about, wow, the difference from the depth of the recession in 2010 to now and how much that's allowed us to provide services to the community and do a number of programs and goals and priorities. So, general fund reserves, so there's the non-spendable portion. This is, again, things like investments in capital, it's loans and other things. You could see a slight decline in this number. That's because of the golf course. We closed the golf course and had to remove a loan the golf course owed, write down the golf course owed the general fund. That was part of our non-spendable reserve, so you can't really spend a loan. So, you'll see an actual little, what looks like a dip, and it was. That's reflective of the golf course closing and being written off. This is the committed reserve, your 15% reserve, and it's growing as your budgeted operating and debt service grow. You have the assigned reserve of 13.5%, and then the unassigned reserve of a percent and a half. So, that is your, the green, purple, and blue are your council reserve policy of 30%. And you can see that you have that and a little bit more. So, this is assigned for infrastructure. You had directed us several years ago to put away $2 million every year if it was possible, and so that number continues to grow. And we have the assigned for CIP, which actually only happened in 2015, '16. Then, we have assigned for flood damages, which actually only occurred in '16, '17. And then, you have your excess unassigned fund balance for your general fund, which is basically resources available to do things like build large capital projects, to mitigate changes in the economy, to have discretionary spending. So put into a chart your target reserve for 1819, showed up about $41,917,000. We had expected to spend some of your infrastructure replacement on repairing some walls. Only some of that money got spent. And when I brought the budget for adoption, you recall, I asked for permission to fund this if resources were available. And so because we didn't spend part of the 1.8 million, we were close to 6 million. And because our revenues were higher than budgeted, we were able to put in 2 million plus into here to bring it to 8 million, which is four years of 2 million apiece, instead of ending the year at 4.2 million. Okay? And you'll see that the unassigned is still in excess of 20 million, a little bit more than 21 million. And, and that's a good comparison against last year, just so you can get an idea, you know, of what's going on. Your non-spendable went down a little bit. Again, I mentioned that's the golf course loan not existing anymore in the general fund. Your committed went up a little bit. It's same with your 13.5 economic uncertainty. This has to do with the level of spending for operations and debt service. And then your infrastructure repair, replacement went up 2 million. And your unassigned went up about 800,000. So that's where your general fund reserves end off the year in 1819. So the next part of this discusses the first quarter of this fiscal year, which is July, August, and September. And just to give you an idea, where last year, we thought our budget showed we would actually deficit spend 2.7 million. This year's budget shows we would deficit spend 11.3 million. Again, that was money we'd saved up. You saw the $20 million of reserves. This is primarily investment in capital improvements, infrastructure repair and replacement in downtown. Almost all that number shows up in your CIP budget. Again, historically, this number bumps between 2 and 4 million. So the fact that our plan is to spend 13.5 billion here is a pretty significant change, and, and the reason for the, for the deficit or reduction of your existing fund balance is part of our spending plan for the year. So, so far for the year, we have only brought in 8 million out of the $117 million budget, which isn't out of the ordinary, and I have a slide that'll explain that in a bit. And again, being a quarter way through the year, seeing your operating expenditures at only 18.5% CIP, at 7.7, and transfers out at 11.6 is, is fairly normal and showing that we're on course. Again, we'll, we break out the data a little bit more deeply in the operating budget to show you personnel services were about 21.9% of the annual budget. As of the, through September, there have only been five and a half pay periods, so that would be about 21.15. So we're slightly above pace in personnel services. That's an indicator. For years, we had plenty of positions that were held open or that we hadn't staffed up. So we're keeping pretty current with the staffing. When a position opens, we get it filled pretty quickly. This is showing that. You'll see that every other category is within reasonable tolerances and where you would usually expect through the first quarter of the year. So this is adjusted for LPFD personnel and supplemental-related expenditures showing up in supplies and services instead. So earlier, when I showed the pie chart, I said, hey, this is how we traditionally look at it. And then I showed you how now we'll be looking at it slightly different. So this is an adjustment between, from how we traditionally look at it to with LPFD showing up as mostly a supply and service. Okay? All right. General fund revenues, although, you know, they don't come in as trendy as things like our payroll. Every two weeks, we cut payroll checks. So payroll trend is fairly constant through the year, and a lot of our expenses work that way. Revenue, because we get property taxes twice a year, comes in a little bit squatchy. So I, Councilmember Warner asked a couple of years ago, how do we compare the same period of time, since it's such a short period of the year and revenues are kind of odd the first quarter of the year? So this graph is intended to capture that. And what you see is, the past two years, our general fund revenues were really high the first quarter. And a lot of that has to do with Gatsby 31, where I have to write the, the market value of investments, the book value down to market at the end of the year. And because we have a hold-to-maturity policy, you write them back up the first of the next year. So you, that's why the first quarter of the past two years, you saw this big jump in revenue, because it's marking the investments back to book value. So this year, at the end of the year, our, our book value and market value were much closer. So you, you see a different trend here. Okay? All right. So the future concern list looks very familiar. This hasn't changed much. It's employment-related costs, CALpers, with smoothing assumptions, mortality assumptions, and de-risking the portfolio. We've talked about that quite a bit. We'll talk about it more during the budget. That, since we are a service organization and employees are, are driving cost, this is always going to be a concern with our pension costs. We should get over sort of the pension hump about 2027 and, and see our pension costs start to decline. So that'll be nice. Can't wait to see that happen. Next thing is, you know, we have constrained staffing, and we have additional staffing needs. Every new project, every new item we're asked to work on is difficult to fit on our current workplace. So additional staffing needs is a, is a concern, financial concern. Interest rate on variable rate obligations. So we, we have variable rate debt that is secured with this campus that paid for a number of things. The bankhead is, is part of that. So our variable rate debt, the letter of credit that accompanies it expires this May. So we will probably do an evaluation about moving to fixed interest rates this year and go through an analysis to make sure that that's a good financial move. But it looks like in our preliminary discussion with our folks, there's a good possibility that come February, March, we'll be back in front of you talking about refinancing our variable rate debt into fixed rate. We also have one piece of fixed rate debt, the 2011 COPs. They originally financed infrastructure improvements out at El Charo. They, once, we had tenants there. They were responsible for replacing that. That recycled money helped build Fire Station 9 and your new EOC. That fixed rate is, we have a refinance window. And based on current rates today, in March, when that finance window comes open, if rates are similar, we'll save several hundred thousand dollars a year by refinancing that to a lower interest rate. So those are two things in the coming months that will be positive economic impacts as long as interest rates sort of stay stable. So we're, we're looking at getting away from variable rate, because there, I do believe we'll start to see climbing interest rates at some point in the next, you know, half dozen years. So infrastructure replacement.
Can I just ask a question? So what you're saying is that there's likely to be an economic downturn with increasing interest rates?
I, I just, knowing how low interest rates are now, I don't, I know they're not going to go lower. And, and as long as they can move, the only way they're going to move up is, the only way they're going to move is up. And so it creates a risk for you. I, I think that if you take into account the interest rate that we get and some of the fees that we pay along with it, and the current fixed interest rate, moving over will, will be a slight incremental increase to our cost, but give us certainty for, which will be helpful for a number of reasons. And yes, I do believe that some point over the life of those debt, that interest rates will go up. Yes. So infrastructure replacement. Clearly, we, we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be maintained and replaced. So that ends up on your list of future economic concerns. Downtown, again, just because of the amount of capital we have slated towards the improvements in there is a concern. And then we are anticipating economic downturn at some point in the next couple of years. So this is where I'd usually, so if there are any questions, I could get them about the city's financial. We could hold them to the end, and I could start talking about the host community impact fee reserves. So you, so you all adopted a host community impact fee reserve policy. The policy had four main points. It preserves the city's financial flexibility, it's to mitigate potential HCF revenue shortfalls, and to absorb fiscal impacts due to interest rate changes, and also to fund maintenance and repair of the bankhead theater. So those were the, the four objectives of your policy. And we'd just like to, so we obviously have the, the HFH report that showed projections out for the, for the life of the host community impact fee, looking something like this. And each year, we provide a superimposed. How did we actually do first the estimates? So you could see that, hey, we're doing all right. It's nice to see actuals are above the estimates. That puts us in a positive place. The other tension here is, of course, interest rates. So when we put the deal together, interest rates were much lower, and they've climbed a bit. So, so I am interested in some of the certainty that switching to a fixed rate instrument would provide, because we, we do have fluctuation here, and in particular, it'd be nice to be able to do longer-term projections with some certainty. So the, one of the components of this is that, hey, we own the building. We have to do a maintenance and replacement of certain items. And by the way, the building was 10 years old when we bought it back, and none of the items on the list had any significant investment. So we had an annual average amount that we felt was prudent based on the cost for these items, plus a catch-up component for the 10 years that the building existed before a reserve was established to come up with the total amount. So we are in year five, which says that, hey, your HCF fund should have about $972,000 left in it. So HCF revenues minus all of your debt service, minus replacement costs. If, if you're hitting 972, you're in a pretty healthy place. So we're just short of the 972 this year. You'll see that we come in about $98,000 under it. Now, we have actually spent about $12,000 doing various repairs and maintenance of our building. So the $98,000, it's a little overstated. It's probably about $86,000 shorter where we'd like to be. So not doing too bad. Okay? And I'm available for any questions you might have.
Questions, Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, just want to clarify. When we talk about what we're spending on the theater, I mean, it's, I mean, we've got the backstopping of the debt with the general fund, but we also have this with respect to the, you know, the, the equipment and the replacement costs. So I'm just trying to, so when the, the city stepped up in two ways for the theater, right?
Correct.
And so, and I'm, I'm not sure that, it, it doesn't completely pop at me, other than this HCF fund balance, but is there a way to?
I, I would actually say we stepped up in three ways, though.
Okay, three, okay.
So I would say that, hey, you're the backstop in case something goes wrong, the general fund, and, and the maintenance of stuff. You also were able to obtain a much better interest rate than, than they would have been able to obtain on their own. So your general fund has a double-A credit rating.
So we used our credit capacity?
Correct.
Right, okay, and that's significant, because then the total debt that you take on changes your credit rating and everything else. So we did use some of our credit capacity rating, however, for them, okay?
Correct. And the result was a, a, a very nice interest rate that, you know, is envious.
Okay, so how, my request is a, maybe something easier to understand for the general populace, that just how much the city is putting into this? Because there are, there's that narrative out there, oh, we're not doing anything. And I think we're doing something, even on this one piece, significant, but I don't think it's as well-known. And so I don't know what the display would be, but my request would be that something that kind of shows it.
The most difficult part of that is that the bankhead wouldn't exist without the city of stepping in. The, the nonprofit organization wouldn't own the theater. If the city didn't own the theater, it wouldn't be available for the public. So that's the most difficult thing to display, is we were, you know, you all, as this, representing the city, it, it was your presence that made the continued existence of that facility possible. And so you could either charge the entire value of that facility to that, and that's a contribution. Obviously, we worked very hard to protect the taxpayers as well. But there is certainly, you know, the answer to that is the facility would not exist without the city's participation in this. But that's hard to sort of give a dollar number.
Right, but the narrative that I'm thinking of is, oh, we're just funneling the HCF through there, and we're really not contributing anything. So I'm, I'm just suggesting that there, there should be a way possibly to quantify some of this. That's, that's, that's all my suggestion is, because there is this, I would say, a false narrative out there that needs to be addressed.
So recognizing that right now, we're just about 100 grand under the actual funds that we will need, how are we on track as we figure ultimately when we start having to replace the, the roof and all of the other HVAC and those sorts of things? Are we pretty much on track? As I said, we're 100 grand short right now.
Sure.
Are we going to keep that trend, or are we going to catch up eventually?
So hopefully.
To, to quote one of my esteemed colleagues up here, hope is not a strategy.
Well, if revenues continue to be strong, because they're beating expectations pretty well, and in interest rates stay relative, hopefully we'll make up some ground on that. And the grander scheme of things, when, when you're looking at, you know, how much money you need to, that you should have 972, being about 10% low is a little uncomfortable, but.
One of the things that happens in recessions is the building and the demolition, of course, goes down. And a large component of what goes to the, to the dump is the construction, the demolition debris. So if the economy starts to slow down, that starts to slow down, and that affects the income going to the cities. So that's, that's the balance, that's where the risk is. Okay, all right.
So one of the ways to look at it as well is that we are in our catch-up period. As Mr. Alessio noted, during the first seven years of the building's life, no dollars were put away, and we were essentially 800, or $860,000 behind when we sort of started this. And so divided that up into essentially 10 $86,000 payments. So essentially, by looking at the balance and seeing that you are roughly $86,000 behind, you've been able to keep up during this five-year period, and you've been able to catch up four of your five, essentially catch-up payments that you were trying to do to, to mitigate the fact that there was no money saved when we acquired the building. So while we're not where we want to be, the 10, you know, the 10-year catch-up period is a bit artificial. We set ourselves a goal to get there, because we wanted to have enough money in the bank. Obviously, if, the ideal world is we would have inherited the building with essentially seven years' worth of this renewal and replacement fund in place, and it would have been fully funded, and there'd have been $860,000 in that. And that would have been a great place to start. We started from zero. So from that perspective, we're at least keeping up with every year that's coming in, and we're paying back a big piece of what we wanted to catch up, but we're not there.
Okay.
So I'd like to, pursuing the question of the. So, I'd like to, pursuing the question of the narrative, and how much money we put in, and what that means to the community, I, I actually hear two narratives. And then the third one, which is here tonight, which is, we're actually being incredibly good stewards of something that's a real cultural asset to the city. I'm really impressed with, with how thoughtfully we're going forward with caring for this. So one of the, so Councilmember Warner has spoken to one narrative. Another narrative I hear is, damn it, we, the city, have to take care of these arts buildings. What the heck do we have to do with the arts? Which, well, it's a problem. I, and I, one of the things I've noticed in the last several months is how much cultural diversity, how much, the variety of programs that take place in that space, so that it becomes one of the centers for acti, for arts activity in the community. That's something that benefits all of us, we, the city, through good stewardship, have made that happen. That's the narrative, I think, that I would like to see us be able to tell. I know that, now when we report out, I'm sure several of us are going to talk about Livermore Pride this past weekend. That is something that we all came together to make happen. Wouldn't be there if it weren't for the Bankhead. Bankhead wouldn't be there if it had not been for our good stewardship. So is there a way we can tell that story, you know, which is not, it's neither, either of the, it's our narrative, which I think is the correct narrative? Any way to do that?
Well, I think that's part of the overall messaging that you've asked us to look into going forward. There are several themes. There's a lot of things that, that, of course, we should be doing, and that we are, that we need to do a better job of communicating.
Well, and to your point, the city owns the Bankhead. We bought and, and own the Bankhead, we're responsible for the Bankhead, but there are 27 other cultural arts organizations that belong to the Livermore Cultural Arts Council. In addition to LV PAC, a lot of those use the Bankhead and the Shea Plaza in front of the Bankhead, by which the fact that the city does own that building now, there's a lot of other cultural arts organizations that can participate because the city owns that building.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, all that comes together, so. Any more questions before I open the comment period? Okay, I have a card from Alan Burnham, public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Marshawn, and councilmembers. I, I think I'm probably a person who understands more about this issue than the average citizen, and I found this discussion highly confusing, which I suspect means that virtually nobody in the city really understands this situation. I bring up the example of a fundraising campaign about a year or so ago for the greening of the Bankhead, put on by LV PAC, and they were putting solar panels on. And when I see things like, well, the city is responsible for the roof, I'm thinking, why is LV PAC putting solar panels on a roof which the city owns, and how does all, all this work? And, and it may, it may all make sense, it's just that it's not been clearly outlined here exactly who is responsible for what, and, and how these finances work. And I would hope that part of the messaging would, would straighten that out. So somebody like me, who's being asked to support the Bankhead for a project which probably included replacement of the carpet, which I, I would say would be maybe the city's responsibility, I, is, is there in fact a clear agreement between LV PAC and the city as to exactly who pays what, and, and what is it? And, anyway, so it, it's not that I'm opposed to anything, I, I just think it's clear as mud.
Mr. Alessio?
So there is an agreement that spells out who's responsible for which system and for how long. So depending on the system, since we're the owner of the building, we're responsible for the shell and for most of the, the large mechanical systems in the roof. Things like carpet and the interior and lighting, we are not responsible for.
Operational, yeah, operational enhancements like solar, which essentially is meant to be an offset of an operational cost, is something that we are not responsible for, but that we would cooperate with the tenant to install those sorts of improvements. And so those things actually are laid out in great detail, mind-numbing, some people might say, as to what's in and what's out. And they generally fol, follow the structure of a commercial lease, where, for example, a shopping center owner is responsible for a shell, and essentially, literally, everything in there, from the carpet to the paint, to the mirrors, to all of the fixtures, to all of the finishes, to all of the lighting, is the tenant's responsibility. That was sort of a starting place, and then we adjusted, because we had a nonprofit tenant that for a period of five years, we took on a, a portion of those larger interior improvements to help them transition to financial self-sufficiency. That five-year period has now ended, and so some of those interior improvements are now their responsibility, but it's all laid out in great detail in the documents when we acquired the building.
Good. Any further questions, comments?
Yeah, yeah. Just a real quick, that's another, so in other words, we took on more responsibility than would be ordinary during that five-year period. So that's another place where we could, you know, make it clear. And I agree with Mr. Burnham, we, we could probably help everybody understand, because I remember going through all that agreement way back when, wasn't all that clear then, but it's less clear now.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was gonna also agree with Mr. Burnham, I can agree with my colleague, Councilmember Monroe, because when I've done farmers' markets recently, you either get, you know, a comment about why the city ever bailed out the Bankhead, versus, wow, what a great resource, so I, and, and so on. So I think it, it does, you can get comments all over the place from one end to the other. So I do think our messaging on this has been, could be better, I guess is the better, nicer way to put it. I wanted to thank you for the report. I think it's very thorough, and it's, I wouldn't have used mind-numbing, but, but it is very... No, I know, but...
I, I think you're referring to the lease, which, which is...
No, I know.
And I would refer to it that way.
But financial reports are not my cup of tea, and, but I think this is, and particularly the, the popular version, I think was very well-done. One thing that I just, and I don't know whether you know the answer to this or not, but this all, of course, caught my attention when The Chronicle had an article on the front page last week, that had the list of the financial stability or some measure of the cities from 1 through 471 in the state of California. And if you're, if you're like number one, that meant not, was not good.
You're in bad shape.
Yeah, you're in bad shape. And there were three cities in the, in the Bay Area that made it to the top 20, it was Oakland, El Cerrito, and Richmond, I think, were the three. And I think Lafayette was at 469, so they were one of the really good ones. My question is, where are we? Do you have any idea?
254.
254, well, the mayor does. 254, we're right in the middle.
Yeah.
Kind of.
So we're in real good shape.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just curious. I mean, it didn't, it didn't give you, it didn't give me any indication of where I could look for this report, didn't spell out the name of the report, just said, just had this that had been done, and here were the ones that were bad, and by the way, Lafayette was really pretty good. 254, huh?
254, yes, so we were in good shape.
Thank you.
So one thing to point out there, though, that I don't believe that report takes into account the, I'll just say the liability for the capital improvements, right? That's not in that, I mean, we're, we're the ones that are kind of addressing it more clearly than most. I mean, help me understand where, where that is in there, but I thought that's not required. I thought we were going out to address that more than other cities.
So I did not read The Chronicle report, so I'm, I'm not familiar with their criteria.
No, but what I meant was...
I don't think it was written in the article.
They had pension costs and...
Right, but what I'm saying is, generally, the required financial reporting, where you do the comparisons, you know, what's their state required and all of that, doesn't require you to be upfront about your capital improvement situation, right? You're looking at me like...
Cost of infrastructure.
Yeah, well, so it depends. Anytime that we, we actually spend money on infrastructure, yes, we do report that.
That's not what I meant. What I meant was...
The planning for and anticipation of, we are, replacement of, we, we are addressing a problem other people are just waking up to.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Unlike, unlike OPEB, where it's a state law that you look 30 years into the future to figure out what your pension, what your other post-employment benefit obligations will be, there is no similar requirement on infrastructure.
What I'm saying is, reality is, that infrastructure's got to be fixed, it's a big deal, and you can fool yourself if you look at that report in The Chronicle and you're not aware of that aspect of things.
Lafayette has a little ground to make up on infrastructure repair and replacement, so.
That, that's my point.
They do real well with pensions, though.
That's, what I mean. It's, it's one thing to look at that report, but it's not the total picture.
Agreed.
So I'm curious, so I, I wanted to echo Vice Mayor Carling's comments on the first part of this report, which I thought was very clear, and I don't do finances terribly well, I mean, I can follow them, but I, I don't do the mind-numbing detail, this was very much at a level that I, that I could follow and that was very clear. I would say that, that when we got to the host community impact fee, I had to think for a long time about what the host community was, and what the impact, anyway, all of that. And I'm wondering if, is it okay if I address a question to Mr. Burnham? Is that, is that allowed, or?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. I'm just wondering if, if, if what you were addressing in your comments of being clear as mud referred to just the AC, HCF, or if it was the whole report? I just need a yes or no.
Oh, just the part about the...
Okay.
The Bankhead and who's responsible for what.
Thank you. So I want to, and I think it's a very complicated situation, I vaguely understand it at this point, but I see why it's a problem to explain. But I, the first part, I really appreciate having a sense of where we've come from, where we're going, where we are now, so.
So just to pick up again on Vice Mayor Carling and Councilmember Warner, it is a very complicated thing between the, the Bankhead, the host community impact fee, and all those sorts of things. And I think we, as we go out and do this messaging, we need to be very clear. One of the things that I found confusing is when I would go to the Bankhead and before the performance, someone would announce, we get no support from the city. And I was sitting in the audience, like, wait, it's our building, we bought the building. And so I think there's confusion to the community when they go and they hear, we get no support from the city. Now, you know, they were, they were two blocks from going, two weeks from going bankrupt, and, and we brought all the resources together and, and saved it. So, and I think that I'm, I'm hopeful now that Councilmember Warner is the liaison from the council to LV PAC, that we can start working on a coordinated message back to the community, so that they do realize just how closely we work to support the arts. I mean, we just, we just installed five new pieces of art, five new pieces of public art in the community, four in the downtown, one over at our community meeting hall. So we want the arts to be a part of people's everyday lives. As I said, there's 28 cultural arts organizations in the Livermore Cultural Arts Council. So there's a lot of folks working together here, and I think that's what we need to do, is we all need to work together and have that coordinated effort, because we all understand that the arts contribute to the quality of life. Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just wanted to give a quick thank you to Doug for putting this, for, I am, I've been nine-numbed by having a job where we see things like this every day, and three public entities where I've had to review PAFERS, too, and I, and for whatever reason, I have those, my wife thinks it's a perverse enjoyment of looking at spreadsheets. But I just, I really like looking at what we see here, and I, I understand the work that goes into creating one, and I just wanted to express my appreciation and stay out of the other discussion here. Thank you.
Great, well done. Well, thank you all much.
So I was, I was just going to say is that, you know, that Councilmember Coomer and I, you know, view this kind of information as interesting as when the mayor sees something about water.
There we go. All right then, so do I have a, a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the following reports?
I'll make the motion.
Then I'll second that.
A move by Councilmember Warner and the other financial wonk, Councilmember Coomer, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Again, great work, that's a tremendous amount of information, and you distilled it all down into something that, that we can actually understand. HCF, maybe not so much, but the, but we've got the history behind that, but it's...
And I really recommend people look at the PAFER, because that's, that's an easier-to-understand version for those watching, if you really don't like looking at columns of numbers. It's a, a better explained way to look at, at how the city is, is going right now.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I would call your attention that a number of staff who had a firsthand, a huge part in creating the document are in your audience this evening as well. So thank you for recognizing that their hard work was impressive.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Okay, 6.03, this is an item that I brought to the council for Veterans Week, that we fly the POW MIA flag at City Hall to commemorate the contributions of the veterans, and also to recognize the POWs and the MIAs. So I would ask for a, a motion that we do that.
Also move?
Okay, move by Councilmember Warner.
All right, then I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion? The Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW, I've spoken with Mike Gilmore, he'll be providing that.
So, and, and I'll, you know, discussion is, it, you know, it hits close to home to me because of, you know, the extensive military experience of my family. I was in the military, too, so I'm certainly in favor of this.
Yes, well, it's, every day, we're grateful to the contributions that have been made by our men and women in the armed forces, so this would be a testament to that, that support. So with that, call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to matters for consideration and council reports.
I have nothing to report out on this time, and actually, nothing to initiate. I think I've initiated living the last couple times, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Monroe?
I'm going to start with a question, the, the, several people who came to discuss short-term rentals, the Airbnbs and so on, could you just, I, I, I believe something is being discussed, could you sort of speak to that, what is happening with that?
Yes, actually, staff is taking a look at that both from the regulatory side as well as the financial side, so there's work underway. We would assume you'd like us to continue that. This is not a, as, as they noted, not unique to our community, but sort of finding that balance between regulation and essentially the ability for folks to utilize this service is something we'll bring back to you. That part of it comes from your community development staff, and then making sure that if indeed some, under certain circumstances, it is permitted that the revenue is generated, so there's a loving, level playing field.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
We were planning to bring that back essentially first quarter, so January to March.
Okay, thanks.
So when you said not, I was going to pursue that, too, you say not unique, but I think it was pointed out, we're the last.
Would the impact is not unique in the Tri-Valley, yes, we, we do not yet have regulations, that's why it's on our list. And as you know, juggling the priorities, you've heard a little bit about that in your budget process.
We've been busy.
Yes.
We've been very busy.
While it's underway, we can certainly make sure that it gets back to you the first quarter.
Howard, just to, just to continue the discussion, since they were complaining about noise impacts, drug impacts, and, and those sorts of things, we have, if, if, if there is drug activity, we can use the drug house nuisance abatement ordinance to go after the owner of the property. If there are noise issues, there are noise ordinances, so make sure, we need to make sure that the community understands that there are tools... that, we need to make sure that the community understands that there are tools that they can use right now. So, if there is noise, if there is drug activity, if there is a disturbance in that neighborhood, there are mechanisms right now where we can move in to abate those problematic activities. So, as, Mr. Landfair, when you're in discussions with the gentleman, if you could follow up with that, appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, carry on.
Okay. All right. So, the last few weeks have actually been quite busy. October sixteenth to eighteenth, I attended, along with Vice Mayor Carling, League of, and several member, several people sitting at the city staff table, League of California Cities Annual Conference. I attended a number of sessions on the place of media, in council, city government, but especially with elected officials, homelessness and affordable housing, and how to address both of those issues. As has been discussed here many times, those are issues across the state. One of the most interesting was on mapping Black California historically, and right now there are, I was interested in that particularly because underserved populations in general are hard to count regardless, you know, of many different kinds. So, I was interested in how that was being managed, which brings me to a session on counting everyone for the census. Again, it's important for everyone to participate. In particular, underserved populations are going to be the most difficult to count. Getting out there, filling out the census, and then helping others who might be reluctant to do so, do so, so that we can be represented, so that we can be counted. All of that matters a great deal. I wanted to, I took copious notes on the keynote speech, which is, where is California going? What are its challenges? And I was going to read you every one of those notes, but I think I'll spare you. I do wanna say, I'll give a couple of key points. First of all, California needs to be inclusive. And one of the reasons I wanna do this is because they really mirror what the, Mr. Vanderwater's report brought forward. This is, this is, we are in fact going where California is going. So, a place that's inclusive, a place where everyone feels they belong. A place also, and we didn't talk about this a lot in that report, we heard earlier tonight, but wealth gaps are something we're gonna need to be paying attention to. There's a fair bit of talk about the millennials, this next generation, and how they will shape society and culture, which is largely by creating places, creating communities, being together, you know, doing things together so that we are all, you know, trusting the crowd was the phrase that was used there. They're hyper-sharing, hyper-collective, and they wanna make a difference. This, to me, speaks very highly of where we're going as a community, if we can embrace that going forward. And finally, the final point was that, about new business ethos, that the bigger you are as a company, the more you need permission to operate. And corporate social responsibility is becoming really important. So, those were the lessons that were pointed out. They resonated with me, what I see in my community and what I see in the region. So, yeah. October nineteenth, as I mentioned earlier, Livermore Pride, it was a wonderfully inclusive event, full of millennials, actually, but also people of all ages. About more than two thousand people attended, and I'm sure you have more to say about that at some point. October twenty-first and twenty-fourth, we're swearing in and promotion ceremonies for Livermore Police Department and Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department respectively. It was a real pleasure to meet and to see those who provide our community safety and security, and we also work really hard to be, to do proactive community work, because the best way to ensure safety and security is to build relationships. I met with our Assemblywoman, Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer-Kahan on East Bay Community Energy Choice to discuss the nature of that, of energy choice aggregation going forward. October twenty-fourth, along with Vice Mayor Carling, attended the Tri-Valley Anti-Pa poverty convening and saw what the challenges are. Again, you know, this is a theme that keeps coming forward, around homelessness, around housing, and around the groups that are working to alleviate that. And then finally, this afternoon, I met with the Tri-Valley Transportation Commission, TVTC, discussing the mega-region transportation bill coming soon. That's the faster bill, and looking to make sure that we have, we're able to use that not just to provide transportation in a meaningful way, but also to alleviate, use that to integrate with, as Mr. Scott said earlier, cutting down on the pollution created by all the transportation, which means also paying attention to jobs and housing within that balance. So, that's, that brings me to tonight, and here we are.
Just a couple of points, if I could, on, you were talking about the trends for California. One of the concerns that I have is we're moving more and more into the gig economy, where you have people that are working for multiple companies. This gig economy, where people are contractors, they no longer have pensions. And when we're looking at an increasing number of people that are experiencing homelessness, are, more of them are over the age of fifty, these people that are not, we're looking at another wave of gig workers that will not have resources as they are too old to work.
Yeah. So, notice I didn't mention gig economy. He did mention that as sort of like, "This is really cool. Millennials will go anywhere. They'll work for anyone." I'm thinking, mm, right. But I'm not so sure about that. And the gig economy was exactly what I said. So, that actually is a problem that I think we will have to address going forward.
Okay. Councilmember Warner?
I attended the Livermore Pride and the Fire Department badge pinning ceremonies, as mentioned earlier. I have two matters initiated, and I ask your forbearance, because I wanna set up one of them. It's gonna be leading to a proposed agenda item, but I wanna give some reasoning for this, because I think it's a little out of the ordinary, possibly. So, I'll start with this. Joan Sepla is running advertisements in her paper, claiming a Westside Hotel option is not only viable, but is of more value to our community than the approved Eastside Hotel proposed by Presidio. Additionally, I have heard from residents, they are being led to believe that Joan Sepla has been talking with potential participants for many months and has garnered significant, serious interest in such a project. Jean King recently told me and others in a community information meeting that they can't share their information with the city because there is an exclusive negotiating rights agreement with Presidio. So, I have a couple of questions for the city attorney. One, is there an exclusive negotiating rights agreement still in effect that would prevent the city from receiving and discussing information concerning a Westside Hotel project?
There was an ENRA in place at one point between the city and Presidio, looking at a hotel. However, that has now been superseded by the disposition development agreement. So, we had one in place at one point, but that is no longer in place.
Second question. Are there any other contractual obligations that prevent the city from receiving such information?
The current DDA does not have any restrictions to that nature, and I'm not aware of any other agreement.
Therefore, since there is nothing preventing the city from getting this information or considering a West, or considering a Westside Hotel, then I believe the voters are entitled to see if there is sufficient factual information to support their claim that their hotel is as real as they say it is. To do that, I would like staff to write a letter to Joan Sepla and Jean King and all the alias groups that they operate through, the titular heads of those, just so we're not missing anybody, inviting them to submit to the city the same type of information concerning their much-hyped project that the city typically receives for any planning application for such a project, and which we have already received for the Eastside Hotel. This is particularly important, since they have made the Westside Hotel the centerpiece of their initiative that is on the November 2020 ballot and their referendum on the March 2020 ballot to block the Eastside Hotel. Response times for an RFP are typically six weeks. Since I'm not asking for a formal RFP to be issued, and they have been claiming for a good fraction of a year that they have something real to offer, I would expect that they could respond reasonably quickly. Three categories of information are particularly important to review. One, is there a feasible plan? One important example of this would be a site map drawn by an architectural firm that has actually built a hotel, along with descriptions of traffic flow, how parking requirements are to be met, and access for service trucks and tour buses. Two, is there an experienced hotel developer standing ready, as has been claimed? Evidence for this would be a signed letter of intent along with the qualifications for that developer. Three, is there a hotel brand of sufficient quality ready to participate? Here again, we should expect a signed letter of intent from a brand describing the type of hotel being proposed, along with a high-level description of the amenities and projected room rates. These are just some examples. I will leave it to staff to come up with a more complete list of what information should be provided so that voters can make an informed choice. So, therefore, I'm requesting that I get concurrence from the city council to have staff issue a letter as quickly as is reasonable requesting the Westside project information. If such information is received, I then request to have an item placed on a future city council agenda to review that information, to evaluate whether the project is actually real and of sufficient quality to be seriously considered. Can I get two other heads to nod on that?
Sure.
Okay. I got three, at least. Okay. The second...
What if they don't?
What if what?
What if they don't?
What if...
Answer the letter.
Well, I'll take that as clear evidence.
Shouldn't we put it on the agenda irrespective of whether they answer?
Pardon?
Shouldn't we put it on, for, on the agenda irrespective of whether they answer?
We could do that. Now, don't forget, this is a, matters initiated, so we can't have three people. But I will go with, let staff issue the letter and then come back with a recommendation as to when to put it on the agenda. Are we good?
Yeah.
Is this everybody, then?
Yep.
Okay. Second item that I'm requesting is a staff report that we can use to kind of measure hotel quality. There is a damaging, false narrative out there that's claiming that the Presidio Hotel is of substandard quality, possibly not better than something that you would find on the freeway. It's not true. But we don't have a way of showing that to the average person. So, I'm requesting some kind of staff report that lets us understand where the Presidio Hotel is in the quality spectrum. And then, just to give you a little bit more information, I talked with the mayor of Dublin today, just to find out the information on the hotel that's being proposed at the BART station in Dublin. Now, I thought there might have been a mistake, that somebody was thinking that for every story, you get a star, when they were, for the article about five stars. However, I did learn that the rating system has changed, and that five star is not the top, that seven is now. But I'm not sure. So, that's the one thing that, I don't know what the rating system is, and I don't know where the Presidio Hotel fits. But the one in Dublin is a, certainly a much nicer-than-normal business hotel. It's not a leisure destination hotel, is what we are proposing here. The, it will have, get a good restaurant. And that difference in restaurant could be a difference in quality. So, you might suggest that if that hotel that's proposed in Dublin is five stars on that scale, that the one that we're talking about here is four stars or four and a half. But I don't know. But I want to get the information. And that's basically why. I think it's very important, again, for the electorate, you know, the voters to be really informed. So, I would request that staff report, a staff report telling us how to think about hotel quality and where the Presidio, proposed Presidio Hotel falls. And we could also use that scale should there ever be a proposal for a Westside Hotel. So, can I get a couple of heads on that one? Thank you.
Counsel, we would use one of those fancy consultants, somebody with expertise in the hotel business. Your staff are not professional hoteliers. We'd use someone independent, bring them on board to give us essentially an overview of the industry and bring that information back to you.
I like experts.
Anything else? Vice Mayor Carling?
Yes, thanks. So, like my colleague, Councilmember Monroe, I also attended the League of California Cities early in this reporting period in Long Beach. I went to a different set of topics. I'll just highlight two. One was on short-term rentals, interestingly enough. And I was gonna suggest a matters-initiated topic, despite the fact, I mean, irrespective of the fact that we had the folks here earlier. So, I think it is important for the city to look into that. The other one was on renewable diesel fuel, and I talked to the city manager about that. We're gonna, I would ask the council for us to look into whether or not renewable diesel fuel would be a cost-saving for our fleet of diesel trucks. You gonna comment?
I was just looking for head nods and then suggested that return as a memo to you?
Yes, please. Yes. Thank you. I won't go through the rest of it that I attended, but it was a very interesting conference. It's always, always learn something there. So, that's the important thing. On the nineteenth, I subbed for the mayor at the American Legion Hundred Year Anniversary of that organization, over in Pleasanton, at Veterans Memorial Hall there. It was very interesting. American Legion's have been involved in a lot of things for a long time. It's really quite an impressive organization. On the twenty-first, I went to the Livermore Police Department swearing in. On the twenty-third, attended the Stop Waste Meeting with Councilmember Monroe, went to the Affordable Housing convening over in Pleasanton. Later that day, on the, on the twenty-fourth, David Halbert, the mayor of Dublin, and I went out to the encampments and helped Open Heart Kitchen serve seventy-five meals to some of the folks out there. And just beg your indulgence for just a few minutes, I just wanted to make some observations that I came away with from the time that we spent out of there. I talked to probably a dozen different people, eleven of whom are from Livermore. They're either born and raised here, or they've lived here for thirty, forty, fifty years. It's really pretty remarkable. The only person that was not from Livermore, she was from Fremont. Every one of them is very appreciative of what Livermore sanitation has provided in terms of the trash pickup there. And they, it's been really much appreciated. And I, you know, I don't know that, we think it was a good idea, and I, you know, we've seen pictures of the tons of trash that has been picked up, but I don't know until you actually go out there and ask the folks if that's really helped, whether or not it's been a help or not. And it has been. I mean, they were just very, very, every person I spoke with was very appreciative of that. I did speak to a gentleman out there that remarked that a woman that was camping near him had gotten one of the units in Chestnut. So, I realize that it's only five spots at Chestnut for homeless, but there was a success story there, and he was quite appreciative that this sixty-ish-year-old woman who had been out there in the encampments for some period of time had been able to qualify and move into one of the homeless units at Chestnut. I also asked the question about... I also asked the question about what's, what are some of the needs, and I understand that some of the work we've been doing on short-term solutions are on the verge of being implemented, but porta-potties was one, clean water, they drink out of the creek, or they steal water, or take water from other places, this is not healthy for them, so clean water. Number of them that, and this is not something we've discussed, there's obviously quite a few of them that could use some serious dental care. Showers and laundry, they realize that showers and laundry are available at Vineyard and Asbury, but they would like more opportunities, and I know that those are gonna be opened up more days a week, we haven't gotten there yet, but we will. Storage, I mean, this has been, storage units have been something that we haven't quite nailed down yet, yet, in terms of where and what they look like and so on and so forth, I got some ideas from them that we might consider. The business of out of commons came up several times, I, they, they understand that they're not residing on property that they own. Many of these people, at least in one section, they're on Caltrans land, and in another part of the encampments, they're actually on private property, and they appreciate that the police don't hassle them that much, but they're always looking over their shoulder, and it's a very uncomfortable feeling if nothing else. And they would certainly like a commons where they believe that they wouldn't have to be looking over their shoulder all the time, and it would relieve that anxiety, at least, they have plenty of other things they worry about, of course, but that would be a relief for one of them, and so that was another thing that I heard fairly often, and of course, any opportunities for employment. And they also understand that they're, they're not, many of them have been unemployed for many years, many of them don't have particularly marketable skills, but anything that they could do to earn some money would be a help, I think, if nothing else, to provide some dignity that they're looking for, and so those are just some observations. So we, and I have to tell you, those Open Heart Kitchen folks, they know those people by first name basis, and they're out there every week delivering hot meals to those folks, and it's, not only is it heartwarming, but it's also heartbreaking to spend some time out there, so.
Thank you for your leadership on that, both you and Councilmember Monroe, that's, certainly appreciate that, and I will be attending a, as I mentioned earlier, an initiative through the Alameda County Mayors Conference, that's gonna be chaired by Mayor Schaaf from Oakland, and I'll keep you guys posted on that. So also, on the 19th, what an amazing event, the Livermore Pride Festival, that was, that was amazing, it really was, the community really coming together, and celebrating our diversity, and the things that we shared that are the same, the sense of family and community. That was, of course, the Shea Plaza in front of the bankhead. The next day, the 20th, I was back at Shea Plaza for the Diwali Festival, the Hindu celebration of the victory of light over darkness, enlightenment over ignorance, hope over despair, it's a wonderful, very colorful festival, a lot of folks down there, also the LPD, Livermore Police Department swearing in, we had two promotions and nine new hires, so we're certainly committed to public safety. October 24th, the Alameda County Transportation Commission met, we are searching for a new executive director, we're finalizing that search, we're on to the last few folks, and we also went over the Faster Bay Area Initiative, this is gonna be on the ballot later, well, next year, next November, and there's, interestingly enough, there's some pushback from the Transportation Commission, because we don't see where this is actually going to solve things, it may just continue to make things as bad as they are, the cities that are sort of driving this are the ones that caused the problem, they're looking for us to solve it for them, so look for more information on that. We already talked about the Airbnb, the South Livermore Valley Area Plan Review and the retrospective, can we get some, can we get consensus on that? Yeah, they have done some phenomenal work, and it turns out that November 8th is the 25th anniversary Jeans and Jewels Celebration that we're gonna have, so sign up for that, and I'll be recognizing the Tribale Conservancy with a proclamation, recognizing their 25 years, it's very exciting. You look around this valley, and what a tremendous success that plan has been, and there's still room for more success, there's still room for more vineyards, we're still trying to get to that critical 5,000 acres, and I think that's, we're well on our way to that, so congratulations on that, so look forward to seeing that come back, so we got the consensus on that. All right, with that, we will not be meeting November 11th, because that's gonna be Veterans Day, dare I say it? No, okay, all right, we'll hold it, but November 2nd, we will be there for the 150th anniversary of the city of Livermore founding, at the Community Meeting Hall, and naming the Robert, or it's Robert, naming the William Mendenhall Community Room, so with that, meeting is adjourned.